Very good. So for those of you on the west coast, a special thank you. It's what eight in the morning? So I know you had to wake up earlier in order to get ready for this cast. This is recorded, it will be uploaded to YouTube eventually. So you can share it with your, you know, watch it again or share it with your chapter members. Before we start, I'll ask the Honorable National Vice President, Mrs. Wumeyan, to lead us in a short prayer.
Okay, but let us pray. Thank you, Mr. President. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day. Thank you for such a beautiful day that you've created and giving us the opportunity to come together for the good of our community. Thank you, Lord, that you're here with us. And whatever will be discussed here will help to get Akisan stronger and growing, elevated to that place that we would desire to see it. Let your presence be with us. We ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much, Madam VP. Before we continue, let us keep the family of the late Wilfred Cocote Sian of New York in our prayers. I believe the funeral service is currently ongoing as we speak. Also, congratulations to Lady Oyo, who has a new addition to our family, a new baby grandkid. So congratulations to you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I'm going to start sharing my screen. Give me one second. So you guys can see my screen?
Yes.
Yes. Very good. Okay, so we are going to use this as our basis point. Again, welcome to today's roadshow. I've already explained what roadshows are for. I'm hoping it's something that we started four years ago. I'm hoping that future administrations continue this tradition because in my opinion, it's very necessary. The way things used to go, at least before I became national president, is that for the most part, we get information at council meetings and business meetings. Some chapter presidents unfortunately do not share information with their members. And so we tend to get major pieces of information at convention, which is not good. So by having these roadshows a month before council meetings, the hope is that, you know, people come on, you join, you can watch these recordings. Like I said, we have them all the way to the first one on YouTube. That way you are totally aware of what is happening at any given time. Okay? One second. All right, so the agenda, the plan is to stay no more than two hours. In no particular order, there will be constitution and policy updates, current affairs slash calendar of events, the 2024 convention update, upcoming elections, the upcoming council meeting, latest news on vocational training and any other business slash general. So our administration has about 140 days to go, which is pretty much how many days we have left to our upcoming convention in Nashville, Tennessee. More information on that. I want to thank every single member of this association for the support given to this administration. It's hard to believe, it seems like yesterday, but it's like three and a half years now. And I guess before you know it, August will be here. So thank you very much. As always, we thank you for all of those who have made donations so far. Please share this with your members, with your friends and family. Visit our website. It's, I think, well, it was down, but it's currently back up. I'll have more information on that. You can donate through text by texting Akisan to 44321. There's also a link on our website. We encourage you for your employers that have this feature to do donation matching at work. Typically, like they want, the way mine works is you, if you donate up to, I think, $500, they double it. And that's something that comes out before taxes. So you don't actually feel it when you get your paycheck. So that's another way of donating to the association. And of course, and it's not, I guess, so far not a practice that I'm aware of with this association, but you can bequeath or in your will donate to Akisan as well. I want to take this opportunity to welcome the new leadership of the Council of Chapter Presidents, the CCP. I believe the election was, I believe, in January. So congratulations to you. Dr. Keiter Roberts is now the new speaker of the CCP. Mr. Richard Ayo is the deputy speaker of the CCP. And Mr. Kletus Udo is the secretary of the CCP. Dr. Keiter Roberts is also chapter president of Miami chapter. Mr. Richard Ayo is the chapter president of Dallas Metro chapter. And Mr. Kletus Udo is the president of Katie, Texas chapter. So congratulations to each and every one of you. We look forward to working with you. And for those who just left office, congratulations and thank you for time served. We really appreciate what you did over the last year or two. We also have two new council members since our council meeting in Miami, Florida. That was last November. Sir Clement Asukwa KOC is the new president of Akisan Atlanta. In fact, he was just sworn in, I believe, last week, last Saturday, a week ago today. And Mr. Etang Ekanim is the new president of Nashville chapter. So welcome to them as well. By the way, Dr. Roberts, are you on the call? Okay, don't worry.
Yes, I am. I'm sorry. Yes, I am. I was muted. Yes.
Okay, I wanted to see whether you have anything to say to the, to the people.
One moment, please.
Okay.
Good morning, everybody. I don't know if you can, I hope you can hear me.
Good morning.
Yes. Yes, okay. Well, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, everybody, for, for being here. First of all, we thank God for making it possible for us to be here today. It's been a long journey with Mr. President and four years. Wow. And so we thank God for the, for the safe travel throughout the years. But coming back down to now, this moment, I just want to seize this opportunity to thank the entire council of Akisan for the opportunity for us to, to have what is called a council of chapter president. Because it helps us to be a little bit more focused on and kind of like have a role, definition and delineation of in, in, in Akisan. So I want to thank you all for that, for making that possible the past few years. And I want to thank my predecessor, Dr. Kiko, and Mr., I call him Mr. Constitution Hugh, as we all love to call him, for helping to lead and to create or to help make this council possible. And they laid the groundwork and helped to create structures that helped for the chapter president to have a voice and to help guide the direction of the Akisan as a whole. So I want to thank the team, the new deputy speaker and Mr. Secretary, Mr. Kletus Udo, are the deputy speaker of Mr. Richard Ayo and the secretary, Mr. Kletus Udo, for stepping up and in spite of the fact that we all have busy schedules and, and challenges in life, but they step up, not that we have so much time in our hands, but we just want to make sure that we give a little back to the community and to help Akisan succeed. Because as, as I know, as we all know, and all of us here know, we, we all profess the law for Akisan. But we also want to give a little bit back as much as we can. When that time, when we are called upon to take on any kind of leadership role and we do that out of a shared love, we, I call it level of love, not because we have the time or the resources, but when there's a will, there's a way. So thank you for that opportunity to, to serve. Mr. President, do we have the more time? Is this the slot for the chapter president or?
This is more of an intro, but there will be an agenda.
Okay, 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 that's, okay, thank you. So I want to thank everybody for this opportunity. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, council, for being here today.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. All right, Mr. Clement Asukwa, are you on? Or Mr. Tarekanem?
Yes.
All right, so yeah, come on, move on.
Akwabomisaw.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Akwabomisaw.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'm Clement Asukwa, the newly elected president of Akisan Alana. It's my pleasure to join the team to serve the community. And Atlanta chapter, as usual, is always open to working with all the chapters and the secretariat. You have a very valuable role.
Amen.
Thank you. Mr. Tarekanem, are you on?
Thank you.
Etang is not on. We have a funeral in Nashville, so.
Oh, okay. Our condolences. All right, we'll go to the next slide. So again, thank you to all the council members who are on here and those who, I guess, will watch the recording eventually. Thank you to the general membership and thank you to all the committee members. As we all know, this is a volunteer-based organization. We don't get paid for anything. In fact, we put in more than we get out of it. But at least if you're like me, you're happy when you get to see the smiles you put on people's faces, those who truly are in need of the services that we provide. So the first item is current affairs. Number one, you probably have noticed that for some time our website was down. The National Financial Secretary, Mr. Basier Bood, and the webmaster, Mr. Rorin Wang, have been working tirelessly to make sure that it's back up and running. It actually is, but if you go to, if you use it, if you're using a laptop to view the website, it's a little off. So we advise you for now to use a mobile device where it displays properly. We noticed that the website was hacked into shortly after we launched the scholarship program. So fortunately, that did not affect the applications. But of course, the website was down and it's at a very critical moment in our, I guess, history, if you will, because people need to access it, especially new people, to gain access to things like registering for convention. But like I said, it's back up and running, just that the, if you viewed on a laptop, the laptop view is not good. So we advise that you visit the website on a mobile device until, you know, when it's back up and running properly, and then we'll let you know. Another thing we do have on the website is, and this is in response to donors who said they were not really encouraged to donate because they didn't really see what we were doing. So there is a page, at least for this administration, for the things we've done. And don't mind the two-year assessment and the link, it's updated pretty much every month with everything that this administration has done over the last four years. There's also another one for vocational training. If you just go to the search bar and you type assessment, you get access to both links. So again, if you know people who want to sponsor or want to donate, send them to these links. If you want to donate as well, you know, visit, see what your money is doing and what this is doing at large. Number three, our second national council meeting will be taking place in New York. Lady Koye, with the chair of the planning committee for that meeting, will be speaking shortly. It's going to be on April the 20th, a Saturday. But of course, we asked people to arrive on the 19th, especially for this particular council meeting. And then on Sunday, people leave that time. Some people, generally depending on the city, they might stay one or two days extra just to tour the city. Number four, 2024 Akisan USA Scholarship Awards will be taking place in Akwabom State, May 2024. The date is yet to be determined, but it will be announced. There will be scholarships, both for those in the US and those in Akwabom State, Nigeria. Especially for those in Nigeria, you have to be attending a public tertiary institution in Nigeria and be of Akwabom State origin. So we'll do it the same way we did last year. Officially, as an association, we'll do two students per local government area, 100,000 naira each. And then on the US side, $500 each to 10 students. On the Akwabom State side, that'll be 62 students. Now, based on what we did last year, based on the popularity, I have issued a 100-student challenge because we had about 800 applications and only about 62 winners. So when I opened it up to the public to sponsor students from their local government area, that number jumped from 62 to 175 in dollars, from $6,000 to $12,000. And that was so popular that people have asked for that to come back again. In fact, a few people have already donated through the website, and I will put up the links eventually. This year so far, we have 1,200 applications. Deadline is March 31st. So there's about one week left for people to turn in their applications. And again, the website is up and running. So I know a few people contacted me saying they could not apply. You can go ahead and apply now. Everything is up and running in that respect. The final batch of cosmetology is taking place as we speak. It started in February. It's a three-month program, so they'll be ending in May or June. Unfortunately, no one registered for the ICT vocational training. That one lasts about six months. And then we also will be adding two more. They're four-month programs, and I'll speak more on that eventually. The way we do it is we invite the vendors to speak to us through Zoom. So that Zoom meeting will be next Saturday, the 30th, same time, 11:00 AM Eastern Time. And I do that because in Nigeria, about 4:00, 5:00 PM, so there's enough lighting over there. And they will speak to us for about 10, 15 minutes. Whoever wants to ask questions, ask questions, the Zoom will be recorded and shared with everybody. And then about two, three weeks after, the training will start. So one of them will be in fashion design and the other will be in the, I call it lady hat making. There's a name for it, but it doesn't, it escapes my memory right now. But it's basically this hats that the ladies wear, these fancy hats ladies wear to various events back home. And the important part of this is also that Akisan money is not used in these trainings. We get them from donors, you donate to the association. However, you get to pick the person that you want to sponsor. That's the key. I think we've raised over $12,000, $13,000 in this effort. And of course, like I said, Akisan's money does not go directly to it. It is people sponsoring their own people back at home. And there'll be more on this, like I said, later. Then, of course, in August, from August 8th to the 11th specifically, we have our national convention in Nashville, Nash Vegas, as I like to call it, Tennessee, because of its vibrant nightlife. The chair of that committee, planning committee, is on here and he'll be speaking eventually. The main event of that convention will be the national presidential and BOT elections. And again, we'll talk more on that in due time. And then, of course, we have various items for sale through our website. The links I'll also post in the chat room eventually. We have, I think I have them here. One second. We have the mufflers. It has the Akisan name and logo on it. These are $20 each, excluding shipping and handling. If you want them, you can let me know privately and then I'll bring them to New York for the council meeting. We also have the mail wool caps branded with Akisan as well. And these are $20 as well. We have almanacs. I don't have one with me here, but imagine, like I like to say, the apostolic almanacs of old back at home. It has all the pictures of the council presidents. It has the 2024 calendar. This will be brought to New York as well, and those are $10 each, of course, less shipping and handling. And last but not least, we have a wrapper, which we want people to sew as a uniform and wear, not only for this particular cultural night, but cultural nights to come. And those six yards, $55. I don't have a sample here, but this is from the pants that I had sewn out of it. So this is what it looks like. Again, they're on the website, the links are there, I'll share them with us eventually. The wrappers are $55. In each case, we ordered about 100 of these things and after that, they're gone. So if you want to order them, get them now. Again, I'll be bringing these items to New York. So if you don't want to have them mailed to you, let me know and I'll bring them for you at New York. This is a flyer of the lady who will be providing the fashion training. Her name is Wumeyan Roland. Her company name is Afanki Fashion Design Empire. Sorry. She's on a carload in case you have someone in mind, you want to send them to check out her facilities. Feel free to do so. Her phone numbers are on there as well. But again, she and the lady who does the hats, they'll be on next Saturday, 11:00 AM Eastern Daylight Savings Time. And you can ask them all the questions you want on that call. Let me see, I think someone had chat questions. Congratulations. Okay, cool. Just congratulating the new council members. All right. So any questions so far before you get into the meat of today's roadshow?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, Madam.
Mr. President, I just want to, okay. I'm looking forward to raise my hand. Yeah. Mr. President, thank you so much. I really, sometimes I'm overwhelmed by all this technology. I graduated from the university, we never saw a bit of computer. So all these things, sometimes I'm overwhelmed. My grandchildren are the ones showing me little things. What you have done on this for Akisan, I have to tip my heart for you, man. That is great. I only have one question. This scholarship, is it one time or is it one-time scholarship? Or is it the one that always, the traditional one that goes like one year, two year, until that person graduates?
Oh, it's one time.
One time?
One time.
Oh, okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to know because if it were, I will get in touch with you on that because I have a foundation for my father that does the, the regular one till they graduate. So I would like to sponsor three students in under Akisan.
Thank you very much.
I will let you know. Thank you. That's it.
And like I said, for, you know, the one in Akwabom State, it will be around ending of May. If you're gonna be home, let me know because it's always very colorful when we have other Akisan members in attendance. Then last year, we had the VP, myself, the board chair, I think the president of San Francisco and his wife, they were all there. So it's always nice to have other Akisan members there. So thank you very much. God bless you.
I will, I will get in touch with you in terms of payment because I have to ask my granddaughter to do the transfer. I don't know how to do that and I don't have Zelle. Either I keep it when you come to New York or I send it to you. And I thank you that you made the almanac and I will buy it when you bring it to New York. I had a problem with my Zelle. I will be in Nigeria at the end of May. So if you get me posted with the, get us posted with when the scholarship presentation will take place, I will be very happy to attend. Thank you, Mr. President. God bless you and your family.
Thank you. You too. Thank you very much. But any other question before we continue? If not, we'll go to the next item. Policy, constitution, I'll call them matters. Mr. Kletus Udo, are you on? If not, Madam Speaker, I think this, you can speak at this time while waiting for him.
Good tomorrow. Where'd you go?
Hello?
Yes, you are, you are on.
Okay.
And if you'd like to share your screen, you can do that.
Yes, please. All right, thank you.
I've given you permission.
All right, sir. Thank you. I hope everybody can see my screen.
Yes, I can see it.
Yes.
I can just go to slideshow, the, there, right there.
Yeah, I was trying to. No, I'm sorry. That's it. It's not it.
It's down at the bottom, next to the, all the way at the bottom, where you have the, the scale.
Yeah, let me, let me stop sharing it because I can see that. Hold on, please.
When you go on the slideshow, it will be difficult for you to see the share button.
Yeah, so let me just put it on there.
It's better you use the share button first and then just go on top of the PowerPoint, you'll see slideshow.
Okay, one second.
Right after animations. Yeah. From beginning, go to from beginning.
I see it now.
Yeah.
Okay. Can everybody see my screen, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to do a, before I continue, I just wanted to say again, thank you to everybody and to show a little clip of what we're talking about as chapter president. That it is real, it's not just a fan, this thing. I just wanted to show the faces of the chapter president that we've had across the country that I've met of, that I've. Excuse me?
I've taken care of it. Go ahead.
Okay, that I've met up what is called a chap, a council of chapter president. As I had stated before, I just wanted to thank my predecessors, Dr. Kiko and Mr. Huete, who took, took over this, the chapter, the council of chapter president and took it to the next level. And at this particular moment, we've had a voice, we have a voice that we can help to guide and direct the affairs of Akisan. So and as I just, as we had discussed before, I just want to show the faces of the new leaders, myself, Mr. Richard Ayo, deputy speaker, and Mr. Kletus Udo, this, the secretary. So we all make up the so-called officers of CCP. But at the same time, even though we have taken on this role, this is just designation of names and titles and stuff because we cannot perform or do anything that pertains to Akisan without the support of everybody. So I just wanted everybody to know that we are relying heavily on each and every single one of you guys to, to be there to guide and to direct, especially the people that has just stepped down, Mr. Kiko and, Dr. Kiko and Mr. Huete. And the president who has taken, Mr. National President, who has taken this whole council, this whole Akisan to the next level. And we just want to build on that and know that, yes, here we are. We are Akisan and we are all profess to be passionately in love and working so hard. And we know we make a lot of sacrifice for Akisan and we just want to, you guys, to know that. Whatever we're doing today, we're not doing it in vain. And I, as I had told somebody, somebody said, oh, maybe you guys, what you guys, they kind of like, it's a show to go on medical mission. I said, no, we actually do believe in what we do. And the person stepped back because we do believe that if we can touch even one person through Akisan's name or either way, that we do on individual basis, that we can all make a difference in one person. It would be a great credit to us and to the group. So here's the, the leadership, but we're all in this together and together we can achieve a lot. So I'm just gonna go to the next slide to just show what we are all about. The main thing that we are focusing on this particular time and the top priorities of this, we have about five or six of them. But as we all know, that this is the year we, we have conventions every year and we have, we are struggling financially and everything else. So as the, 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 the leadership of the, part of the leadership of this, of this organization, we're taking steps to see what can we do as a group. As we had met, we discussed certain things that we want to do to help us, help to move Akisan forward. So one of the things, the, the major thing that we're looking at, I could say that this is kind of like a one, a part, number one, A and B, which are the main focus of what we want to be doing, looking at the next few months coming down the road. The number one thing is to support Akisan, the successful hosting of the 37th Akisan Convention in 24 in Nashville. Yes, we know that we've been doing this every year, but every year, things are different. And by the, by the, what we mean by supporting, yes, we do that, we do support every year. But this year, things are different. Things are escalating, the prices of things. So when you see us trying to ask you to pay your dues or maybe the chapters, to please pay your dues early. Yes, we know that we have addios we can pay till the end of the year. But at the same time, we want to be able to think for the moment and for the times and for the season that we are in. What is going on? How can we make it better? How can we turn things around to help us to be successful as a group? Because we're not gonna. Because we're not gonna be saying, oh, this is the national thing, this is the, 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 there's no money, we cannot do this. Yes, we are here in this particular moment, in this particular time. So what can we do as a team? To move Akisan forward by hosting a successful convention in Nashville this year. So that's one of the priorities that we're focusing on. And I wanna thank um all the ni- the chapter president who has taken steps. To make sure that they are paying that dues. We've had about maybe almost ten chapters that have done that and we wanna plot those chapters. But at the same time, we want, these are the lowest hanging fruit that we think, we think we can, we can achieve within a certain, a short period of time in spite of everything else. Because these are, we all have chapters and we wanna see how can we as chapters support. Um the 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 functioning and the successful hosting of the convention this year. That things are so difficult, the prices of things are skyrocketing. And we're not living in two, three years ago that we can take things nonchalantly and say, oh, we'll pay that dues later. But in whatever way and uh you know, getting, collecting um um uh what do you call it? A a book, an ad for the booklet, these are the things that we're gonna be focusing on, working hand in hand and step in step with the, with the national, with the EXCO. And with the BOT to make sure all hands on deck. And we're calling on the BOT, on the EXO, all of us. And if you are just at large member, we are asking you to join hand with the chapter president. Because we, behind wherever you are, there's a chapter that you're supporting. If you just don't have a chapter at this particular moment, we want you to find a chapter and belong because. We want to work together collaboratively to move Akisan forward. The other part of the um of the priority that we're focusing on this year um is um in the next few months. We are struggling and we know things are not, we don't, we don't have the money. So does everybody. When you look at the whole world, things have changed. We are no longer in twenty twenty, uh in twenty nineteen, twenty seventeen, even twenty. I would say twenty uh twenty-one, even twenty twenty when we had Covid. Things have changed financially. And at the same time, so when things change, we need to change what they change. And we wanna take a look at, I'm not sure if everybody can see the structuring of the Akisan. Uh fundraising and convention funding strategies. We have so much talent in this group. We wanna know, I hear this um. Uh committee for finan- uh for fundraising that is in existence. And I think we can do better by not making it in a, kind of like in a, in a silo. We wanna make sure that it's out there as a major part of Akisan. So that we can tap into those uh people that have that knowledge of fundraising, people that. Might know, maybe they've been involved in that area. We need to change what they change. We need to take a look at what can we do? Maybe restructure that committee that is there, find people that maybe they meant, I, we really encourage people to become members. Take a look at each of the chapters. What are they doing? Those chapters that are successful or take a look at the the the. Other, other organizations that are successful financially, what are they doing? And especially when they're successful in fundraising. How can we turn things around to benefit Akisan in the long run? This particular moment, we're helping to support the the fundraising to be able to get the convention finished. Uh successfully. But at the same time, right after the convention, what happens? We don't wanna go back to doing things as usual. We need to move forward with the twenty-first century movement. Whatever is going on in the world, we need to see what I think people are doing that are successful organization. Nonprofit organization that are successful, how do they raise funds? Maybe somewhere down the road, I wanna throw this into your head. Can we have a place that we can go as Akisan in a yearly basis? Instead of paying a hotel, can we, this is just something to look back, to look forward in the near, in the far future? Can we predict that future that um that may be something we can take a look at? Doctor Gigo usually say, uh uh take a look at Akisan that you want and create it. So can we take a look at Akisan in the future and say, maybe we can have a hotel that we can recycle all this money? Uh all this money that we pay to other hotels, uh all this money, how can we make that money that we have to get recycled back into Akisan? That's just, you know, along, kind of like something you could take a look in the future. I'm not saying, oh, it's gonna be happening today, but I'm saying. Let's strategize and let's refocus, let's restructure our thinking to fit. The current organizational structures and what is going on in the world. Instead of blaming and say, oh, that didn't work out, or we, we need to see what are the people doing? We need to stop the blaming game. We need to see, okay, that didn't work out, what went wrong? And said, can we do certain things that would help us to fix the problem? And and maybe see what the the issues are and then take a look at it and see, okay, this is what the problem was. And then let's fix it together. So we, the chapter president, we have a few other things that we don't wanna bore you with. These are the two major things that we wanna do. We have. We wanna strengthen uh the um, we wanna strengthen the other things. We wanna encourage the chapters. To be more, more proactive. We wanna encourage the chapters. We wanna encourage people around you. To be a part of the chapters, encourage people to come and join us. And so we wanna just focus on these two things. This is what the chapter president are focusing on. And at this moment, we wanna know. Uh when it comes to fundraising and and even supporting the chapters, how many of our chapters, we all come from chapters, how many of our chapters? Are current, two years ago, have, have we been current with our, with our uh dues payment? How many chapters haven't paid that dues yet? And you as a chapter member, do you, do you think we are up, up current? Or can we step back and we re- revise our constitution to see, we don't have to wait till the end of the year to pay? Then how do we manage those conventions? We wanna wait till the end of the year to pay the dues. So these are the things that maybe the constitution. Uh um uh committee can take a look at. Those are the things that we can make adjustment to fit the times, the times. And help us to be more productive and more active and also be more successful in our drawings. So I just wanna let um Mister uh constitute, uh I wanna leave opportunity for Mister. Eo, um if he has anything to say, then Mister Kletus could tell us a little bit about what he has um as the part of the constitution. Thank you.
Thank you, Madame Speaker, for your presentation.
And together we can accomplish more. Thank you.
Yes, I am on. Thank you, Madame. Thank you, Madame Speaker. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mister President. I'm adding to what Madame Speaker just said, um we also um work on how we can reach out to our people. Um recently, we have a lot of people having issues, some of them dying in their houses. And most of the time, we don't know them. So I'm copying from what the KD chapter is doing, try to see how you can reach out to our people who are. Being probably, maybe some of them are sick and we need to reach out to them to make them know that they are still part of our community. Not only when someone is dying before we do, we do a co-fund me. So we try to reach out to our people to make sure they, they feel loved. Also, another thing that we. Uh we encourage our people is also cha- different chapters to introduce the youth to make sure in future we have people that. Move the Akisan forward. So we try to work also on the youth kind of unit, make sure we in, we include our youth. Into our programs, into our executive, into our, their chapter dealing, so that in future, the Akisan would not just miss out in the space, rather. We have to carry on with that mantle. So those are the things that we also discuss at the, at the um council of chapter president. Over to you, Mister Speaker, or Madame Speaker.
Yeah, thank you, um Richard. We appreciate the input. Mister Kletus, do you have a few things for us for the, what we may be thinking of in the next. Phase of the constitution?
Let me see if he's on. I don't see him. I don't think he's on yet.
Okay, so um maybe I could just say a few more things, um that is, uh we're gonna take whatever. So we wanna encourage everybody, whatever you think we can make adjustment until, because I think that's what we were doing the last time. Um sending some information to us so we can send back to the constitution uh the uh committee to take a look at. What can we do at this? Take a look at the signs of the times. How can we make us more of a, a successful, I don't know if you've ever heard of um high reliability. Uh uh organizations. Take a look at what is already, that is already on the, on the map. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. What are organizations, what are other organizations that are doing? That are making them successful in managing their finances and also successful. In moving forward and in working together to create uh uh, you know, endless a success. So if you have anything that you think you want us to take a look at, we would pass that on to Mister. Uh Mister uh Chair of the Constitution and then we can go from there. So please, and we wanna support. Um the convention, I'm, I'm appealing to all the chapter president. Um I'm not beating on you, I'm just asking if you could please pay your dues. I know it may not, it, it might seem like it's not a lot, it's not a lot. But yes, it could go a long way. And also those of you, if you can make contributions, let's work together to make sure that this, this convention is successful. In spite of the ti- the hard times. Thank you. Mister Kletus, are you here? Okay, Mister President. Thank you. Thank you, everybody for listening.
Well, thank you very much, Madame Speaker. Um just to emphasize one thing that she mentioned, and that's the issue, uh issue of um. Collaboration. It's even in our constitution. We're thirty-seven years old. I know generally speaking, we tend to stay in-house, if you will. But we're also members of other organizations, be it American, African, or even Aquibum. So we need to borrow the best practices of these organizations for the betterment of our own. So on that note, you know, whatever you have, you know, feedback, give it to us. We're not perfect. We're always gonna build upon, you know, every time we have events like conventions, we have the lessons learned and we try to incorporate changes. So that over time, we get better. So but thank you very much, Madame Speaker.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm going to share my screen again. Let me see. All right. Share. All right, hopefully everyone sees my screen right now.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm gonna go on to the next item on the agenda, which is the twenty-twenty-four National Council Meeting in New York. Uh Mister, no, no, I don't believe he's on. He did have a conflict. He's the chapter president. Letting Koye, who is the chair of that planning committee, is on here. Like I mentioned earlier, it's gonna be Saturday, April twentieth. But we ask that people arrive on the nineteenth um to participate in whatever activities happen that day. There's usually a reception and I know letting Koye, we will speak more to that. And that's the hotel information. So while she's speaking, unless she's gonna share her screen, um I'll leave this on the. Uh on the board so that everyone can see. So letting Koya, are you ready?
Yes, Mr. President. I'm ready.
Please proceed.
Okay, please. Thank you so much for the um opportunity to share. And give the members of the council the updates as per the second. National Council Meeting in New York. Our president is attending. The memorial mass of Wilfred Acien, one of our very longstanding. Member of Akisan in New York. So the memorial mass is going on as we speak. That's why he's not here. Um. Everything is set for the reception. I would like to just go through this. Uh for all of us, the hotel is offering um airport shuttle. And then up to forty-eight hours prior to arrival. You can cancel it without penalty. You can cancel the reservation. Let's say you have a family or a friend. That you want to stay with in New York. You don't wanna stay in the hotel. You just want to come and participate. You can cancel the reservation. You have forty-eight hours prior to arrival. Um there's always discounted um um presidential suit. If you are interested, it is one thousand seven hundred dollars uh per night plus tax. And you can do that by going directly, calling the hotel directly. To um book for that uh presidential suit. We have a complimentary wifi in the guest and the meeting rooms. Uh we have guest room uh available three days, repost out. However, client must call directly to secure the guest room. Discount overnight parking, twenty dollars for in-house guests, that is if you are staying in the hotel. Uh but if you are coming, maybe you stay with a friend and you are coming to participate and you need to pack the car. Then they're gonna charge you the, their own official rate. The official rate is uh, this is New York, forty dollars. Per hour. So you figure that out. New York is very expensive. Sorry. It is the way it is. We also have discount packing, ten dollars per day for the event. So if you are coming for the event on Saturday. And we're gonna give, uh the hotel will ask you, are you coming for Akisan fundraising event? And then if you say yes, there is a tag they're gonna give to you to place on your car and they're gonna charge you only ten dollars. The twenty dollars of in-house guests is for the whole period that you're gonna stay. That is, um if you arrive on. Friday and you stayed Saturday and Sunday, you will only pay twenty dollars. So on Friday, uh we have arrival. Uh Friday evening, seven P M to midnight, we have a reception dinner. In the hospitality suit. We will also have presi- president suit by Akisani. Uh food for the late arrival. Let's say you arrive like eleven o'clock. I know some of you, you go to work. And by the time you book your flight and you arrive here, it may be very late. But there will be food available for you in the, in our own presidential room that would suit that we, we um. We have, that is from Akisan, New York, to receive our guests. So there will always, always be food there. So anytime you arrive, all of us, all hands will be on deck. Um I will put my phone number, you can call me, my room number, call the president, you have arrived, you. We will take care of it because we will be there from Thursday uh to await the early arrival. And the late arrival people on Friday. On Saturday, the twentieth of um. April, we're gonna have breakfast, seven, we're gonna have breakfast by Akisani. Still in that presidential suit. We're gonna have breakfast. And then um the council meeting will start nine A M to P uh uh three P M. Then we will have a walking lunch. You're not gonna leave that uh council meeting uh venue for lunch. Instead, lunch will be in a box and we will be brought to you in the council meeting venue. Um so uh that is uh what we're gonna do then. Uh coffee, tea, water for the meeting, that one will be uh thrown out from morning to. Anytime that um the, the meeting starts, it will be stationed there for the coffee drinkers, tea drinkers. And those who drink water. Then we're gonna have the gala after three P M. We're gonna have the gala slash fundraising, six, six, from six to midnight. So there will be dinner served by the hotel while the fundraising will go on. And you will be very elaborately entertained. Based on the Akisan style we have in New York chapter. You know, we have a whole lot to show um our members to share with you. In terms of the cultural dance and also whatever is gonna happen. So um it will be a very great pleasure to have all of you in, in New York. We are waiting for you. I know about eighteen chapter presidents, the stakeholders. Past chapter president, they have already booked their, their hotel. And I know a lot more will be booking before the event starts. So Mister President. Uh all this information, my pre- my chapter president has put it in the chap- the council page. For reference. And that is all I have to share. If there is any question, you can ask. Or you can text even after this meeting, you can text any question, post it on the council page. Myself and my president. Myself and my president will be able to answer. Thank you. Uh Mister President, for giving us this opportunity to host. And celebrate our Ak- Aquaboom state culture with our Aquaboom might all over in the diaspora. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam. Um but any questions for Madame B O T Secretary? Uh if not, um but let's all go out and support Akisan, New York. Uh we have not been out there as an association since, I believe, nineteen ninety seven, when they last hosted the convention. So but all come out, uh there's also going to, this is the last council meeting before the elections and convention, so it's also important as well. So I'm I'm looking for turnout, especially for those within that three, four hour drive radius. So but I'm convinced we'll be there. We will support you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mister President.
All right, um before we go to national convention, I just wanted to say two things. Number one. If you look in the chatroom, I've posted the direct links to various items that I talked about earlier. So like the convention registration, buying your program booklet, uh reserving tables for the convention. Uh buying of the various items we have in our merchandise store. So again, I've put all those links in the chatroom. They're all direct, so you don't have to go to the website first. Just click those, go direct. Thanks in advance for your support. Also, I did not include the flyer for the um. The second vocational training, it's called Fascinator, this the hat this lady is wearing. So this is a flyer. She'll be on with the other lady for fashion design. This uh well, next Saturday, the thirtieth of March at eleven A M Eastern daylight savings time. These are the services she offers, but I think for Akisan, she's just gonna do the fascinators, the Ankara bags and the umbrella. I think anyway, she will speak for herself on the thirtieth. So that's her flyer. I'll send that out eventually and also put this on our website and our social media pages. All right, um next item is convention. Again, coming up August eighth to the eleventh. Convention Chair is on Mister Nekanetum, uh National Vice President is the co-chair. And um Miss Udemikai is also convention co-chair. So Mister Nekan, are you ready to go?
Yeah, I'm ready.
All right. You wanna use my screen or you gonna share yours?
Uh I can use your screen, please.
Okay, very good. So uh please proceed.
Aquaboom is on.
Yeah.
Yeah, um we are so excited. Uh Nashville Tennessee chapter is so excited to host everyone this year. My name is Enyekanetum. I am the chairman of this convention planning. And we have um Mrs. Wemilin, our National Vice President, who is also the coacher, and Demikai was also the coacher. So this convention, uh we are introducing a lot of new features. Um this year, we will have our first ever basketball competition. We're looking forward to having the male and female basketball competition. Because I mean, this is something that we've never had before, but I, we just thought about it. It's about time that we include all our young adults, all our youth, they can also participate because every year, we normally have the soccer. Um soccer, table tennis and golf, but this year, we decided to introduce, in addition to what we normally have to introduce the basketball game. So I believe this will be really, really exciting. The number two, we'll have our first ever karaoke competition. We're looking at Thursday night to have that karaoke competition. So please inform your friends. If you know you can sing, you can always practice right now and get ready for the karaoke competition. And also, uh we'll have a second tech uh summit. Um that tech summit started last in uh sunny San Diego convention. We're looking forward to having that tech summit again this year. Um. The main feature of this convention, we will have our national president uh elections and B O T coming up this year. So um we're looking forward to a very good, you know, presidential election, whoever is going to be the next leader. But Nashville Tennessee, that's when, that's where we will make that decision. Um for the rooms available right now, we have our room rate is one seventy nine per night. Um the rooms are really spacious and the hotel is what Akisan asks for. You know, ice is much more affordable and it's quite closer to the airport, so you don't even have to rent a car. As a matter of fact, the, from the airport to the hotel is less than five minutes. So uh we have an airport shuttle that will take you from the airport to the hotel. And also Delta Airline is offering ten percent discount. Um hold on a second, I'm trying to check other slide.
It's on here.
Okay, yeah. So um. Um key features, I wanted to let everybody know the convention rates have gone up. It's no more uh hundred dollars. We've had hundred dollars for the past twenty or twenty-five years of our convention. So this year. We decided to move the convention rates up a little bit to that. You know, we will be able to fund this convention because our convention is getting a lot more expensive than it used to be. The hotel is offering a free parking. So um. Free parking, but like I said earlier, we have limited packings and also uh, you know, you don't even need to, you know, really. You don't, I mean, the people don't really need to, you know, uh. We have Uber services, you know, I encourage a lot of people to use Uber service and hotel shuttle. Like I said earlier, you do not really need to rent a car coming to Nashville. You can always move around. We're looking forward to uh this year, we are introducing uh native food on Friday and Saturday night. Usually, we normally have our food on Friday and Saturday, we have continental dish. But this year, we decided to just move on and have those to eat or meals, our own food on both nights. So that's a good thing. The sad part is, we do not have any breakfast this year um from um. You know, looking at it, because uh usually a lot of people do not utilize this breakfast. And it's a lot of money that we spend on that breakfast. So this year, we decided to experiment and see how we can take that breakfast off. We solely encourage every chapter to at least have two people to donate, you know, two people that can be on the high tables that are taking donate. We are trying to, you know, encourage our members because this convention is meant for Akisan members. So uh we want to encourage all our members to participate in the convention and also have opportunity to sit down on the high table. Uh we are looking forward to uh recognizing all our healthcare professionals. The past four years has been really, really hectic for the healthcare professionals from Covid. So we're looking forward to recognizing all our healthcare professionals this year during the convention. Okay, um all the requests we wanted to make, um early convert, early registration is still ongoing. Please take use of that opportunity. Because uh the full rate is one fifty, but if you can, if you do your early registration and you. You have that discount. So please, we really encourage everybody to take advantage of that um um early registration. Also, the program booklet is still ongoing. Please, um you can put in your art, congratulate whoever you want to do, you know, but you know. We encourage everybody to purchase the program booklet, you know, put in your heart, you can advertise your business, you can. Put your family picture, whatever you want to do. Please make use of that opportunity. And also, we are calling on members who are interested in sponsoring some of our events. Uh if you're interested in sponsoring our event, please let me know or you can let the national president know. We have several, several events from soccer, basketball event, we have a tennis event, and we have a tech summit. Whatever event that you think you can submit, you know, you can sponsor. Even if you want to sponsor Saturday night, you're welcome to. You wanna sponsor Friday night. Whatever you want to sponsor, please, we really, really need to encourage anybody that wants to sponsor an event to do so.
Mister Tama, you're on?
Yeah, I'm on. Can you move?
Okay, cool.
Is that all? Okay, yes. So now I'll leave this opportunity for anybody that may have any question to ask.
Uh here, Terry, we just trying, I have a question or comment.
Sure.
So I, this is basically a general question, not necessarily related to the uh convention, but just about every other event that we have. It is my experience that every time we post this discount airline program. When you go online to do a search, they are actually much more expensive than just booking direct airline from either the. The general portal like Orbit or going directly to the website. Why are we promoting airlines that are more expensive? On the link, on this link that we shared versus if you just go directly and book either with the airline portal. Or one of these other portals. I've never been able to understand that. Maybe somebody can explain to me why. A discount program is always more expensive than a non-discount program.
From my experience, I mean, I mean, I believe this is a general question, is really not pertaining to Akisan. But from my own experience, to be honest with you, I think third party. Do offer some discount compared to the main airline company because the a- airline company, they're giving this opportunity. For third party's company to also make some money.
No, I'm saying that whenever we post this link, and I have looked at it, the last. The last two arrangements that I have made to travel on behalf of Akisan. The link provided is far more expensive than just going directly to any of these. Uh either going directly with the airline or going directly to a third party like Orbit or any one of these other. Uh party that promotes tickets. What I'm saying is, before we post and promote these things as discounted price, I think we should do some of our homework because. I have never found them to be a discount price. I've actually found them to be much more expensive. So that I don't see a discount on these these promotion though. So we're gonna promote a discount later, really, but I should be able to go to a site and say, okay. In this program, I'm getting three hundred dollars. In this other program, I'm getting two hundred dollars. And that shows like a discount. But I've never seen any of these link that we provide to provide a discount. So I think either we stop promoting it that way. Or would really compare before we promote it that way.
So Mister Hugh, another thing I don't know, because some, some of the links, it should have opportunity. Maybe after you purchase the ticket, before you sign up, before you make the payment, you now put in your discount. Your discount code, and that's when you can see that discount. Now, I I'm really not.
Okay, it's very simple. Try it with the link that we currently have. See whether you can get a better discount with that link. You'll find out you can't.
Okay, I'm gonna. Um Achibon Sora and Diana Fia had their hands up. Uh with respect to Mister Hughes' question. Um I guess I wish I brought this up earlier. I'm not, I guess disputing what you are saying. Um I will tell you that before we post anything, going back to maybe two, three years ago, we tried to reach out to all the airlines. And unfortunately, um Delta, United, and I think there's one more that only gives us this ability. Uh with respect to the third-party websites, I mean, sure, if we can, I mean, maybe what we can do is to, you know. Everyone has their way of getting the uh their tickets, but we can put all the links on the website and then people make their choice. Uh but yeah, I I wish I brought this up earlier. I've noted it. Granted, there won't be another convention in this administration, but moving forward, I guess it's something that we should note. Like you said, either we stop advertising and let people just go get their own tickets. Or, you know, again, we do the time to do the research and make sure that it's in line with what other people are doing. Okay, so um Achibon Sora, Madame Diana Fia, and uh I think the V P has her hand up and then the P R O in that order. Achibon Sora first?
Uh Mister President, thank you. Um the last speaker. Has brought in a very important observation. I didn't think Akisan has actually sat down to. Uh collect any data to determine the failure of success of these, some of these uh discounts. Uh that's just a by the way um comment. Um Mister Chairman of the Convention Planning Committee, uh. I wanted to ask uh one question first, and then uh. Actually, I wanna ask my questions in successive order, and then I'll shut up, you answer all of them. Number one, uh you made a mention of there is not going to be breakfasts. Uh does it mean that the hotel does not serve breakfast, period? Uh whether you pay or free or whatever? And then that's number one. If. Hotel, the hotel serves breakfast, can there be a negotiated discount? For people, for Akisan people to actually buy their own breakfast, but get discounts from the regularly charged. Uh uh price. Um. Okay. Yeah, from the regular price, from the, from the regular price. I think I forgot the other question, but I'll let you answer this one first.
So the hotel do offer breakfast, uh but I mean, we, at first, we were trying to negotiate to see how we can have that discounted breakfast. But what the hotel wanted us to do, they wanted us to actually collect the money. For names of those who are going to have their breakfast at, you know, every day. And it was too much liability for us. So we decided anybody that wants to eat the breakfast can always get their breakfast from the hotel.
Okay, so my follow-up, uh yeah, the third question I wanted to, uh I mean, another question I wanted to add there was. Since there are not going to be supposedly breakfast paid uh with the hotel, is the chapter planning anything? Uh is any plans to feed people in the morning? Uh.
No, absolutely not.
Aside the hotel's arrangement.
No, the the chapter cannot uh. We, I mean, we would love to, you know, we are going to host the Thursday night and we are going to host the Friday afternoon. And you also have to understand, this is totally on the chapter's pocket. So I mean, we are actually a small chapter. There's no way. We're gonna be able to put the bills for breakfast on Friday and Saturday night. That would be too much for a small chapter to handle.
Okay, so bottom line is that as far as breakfast is concerned, uh are you?
You are your own.
At one, at your own rigs, bro. McDonald's.
Before.
Another thing, yeah, we have several restaurants available around the area, so. You can always get your breakfast quite cheaper than the hotel, if that's what you want to do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, before I hand over to um Madame Diana Fia, I just wanted to put it in uh money, monetary terms. So we always complain about spending money at hotel, giving all our money to hotel. The last two, three years, we spent about twenty thousand dollars on breakfast, and then we didn't even get to serve everybody. So as a cost-cutting measure, as the Madam Speaker has spoken about earlier, uh we have to do this um. Uh do what we're doing now. Now, in general, um and this goes back to what the Convention Committee came up with at the council meeting in Miami. We need to be nimble and agile. So what works in Nashville may not work in another city. What do I mean by that? So we're looking at a situation where maybe if we go to New York, instead of being in a hotel, we have a convention center and you look for your own hotel, right? We're looking at options where, I'm just saying, there's no food served at any of the events, you fend for yourself. Again, each city will determine what is going to uh take place there. But again, that's, that's for the future. And Madame Diana Fia?
Yes, hopefully so long.
Yeah.
Yeah, um. It is um nice to be in your group. I appreciate all of you. Honorable Chairman of the Convention Planning Committee, Brother Nekan. Um thank you for the detailed um explanations of what will be going on and hopefully taking. Place at the convention. Uh my question concerns the fundraising.
Okay.
Uh you and your team, the planning committee, is requesting or asking each chapter to present two people. To the high table to donate at least, well, it says a thou- a thousand dollars. I'm thinking maybe there shouldn't be a limit. Um on what they can donate. Now. My main question is on the fact that, again, we are taxing ourselves. You are putting it on the chapters to pre- to give to you these two people to donate when they sit on the high table. So is there a way that we can do this fundraising outside? Maybe, and we, the members, we would be um like. The second step, you figure out, after all, you're in the, the capital of country music capital. So there are, there is money there. Is it possible to reach out and figure out the outside, the ways to make money? From outsiders and then members, Akisan members, will just give what we can. Does it make sense? Because there is money.
What you are, I think, yeah. I think what you're trying to, what you're, maybe what you're asking about, uh I'm not trying to insinuate, but I think you're talking about sponsorship. I think what you're trying to, what you're, maybe what you're asking about, uh, I'm not trying to insinuate, but I think you're talking about sponsorship. Is that right?
No, I'm talking about bringing people that can donate. Sponsorship is different. I'm talking about reaching out to people who 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 are in that music industry that can donate by selling what we do as a nonprofit.
So, uh, okay.
Rather than taxing ourselves over and over and over again.
We will, we will still have to tax ourselves over and over again. Because I mean, uh, to be very honest with you, I've listened to so many complaints over the years. So many people are like, this convention must be our own convention. We don't want people to come from Nigeria and take over our convention. So we're trying to make this convention. We're trying to take it back to how it used to be twenty years ago. We come in and we raise that money for ourselves. We can raise it. We have several people who are making good money, making money, but you just have to understand that this is the only organization that we have. We have to encourage them to come and donate because we have several projects which we have to champion. As the Chairman of the Committee, I'll also donate. Because I mean, I want to see how Akisat is moving forward. So there's no way I understand we are spending too much money to come to the convention, but at the same time, you have to understand this is our own. So if we do not promote our own convention, how do we expect somebody to come and donate, I, you know, a lot of money? We are also trying to bring in some of the special guests that will come in and donate. We will have special guests, but I can guarantee you we'll have special guests that will raise up to fifty thousand or hundred thousand. I cannot guarantee you that. But we individual convention goers that go every year, we can chime in five hundred, one thousand, two thousand. We we work. We can make that donation and we can make this happen. So that we don't have to rely on outside force to come and phone our, you know, phone our convention for us. I really think we can do it.
I have a question.
Okay, no, can I, I say follow-up. So um, hang on please, somebody, I don't know who that was. So um, to thank you for answering that part. Hopefully, we will be able to raise money. Now, I want to follow up on what um, uh, B O T member, uh, brother Archie talked, asked you about concerning breakfast. So if the hotel, um, if you, the chapter, you're not providing breakfast and we have to pay, there's another angle to this. So you just go and think about it. Is it possible to have have vendors that can bring local breakfast inside the hotel and you charge them for, um, what is it called? The the boot fair, the, what, what do they pay for boots? So they come, the vendor, they they sell breakfast if the hotel will allow it. And I, I, it's likely will be cheaper than what the hotel will charge, and we then make them pay for the spot.
Um, I'm very honest with you, I did not.
There's something to think about.
I don't think the hotel will allow anything in their property, any food outside.
Well, every convention we go to, we have those people hocking food in their coolers, and we usually buy them.
Honestly, the hotel don't have any information about it, but I mean, it's under the table. We can do it.
Even if we have to do it under the table.
It has to be on that.
Because we, some people coming in, we will not have rental car. So how will we go around to get food to? You know what I mean? To get breakfast. You don't feel maybe what motto, you know, and you're not offering.
And this under the table talk will be on YouTube.
Yeah, exactly. It's not good on YouTube.
I didn't say under, he he brought it, the chairman. But that's the only way you're gonna do it.
All right.
The hotels are very strict.
Thank you. Okay, uh, before I pursue you, there were two other people before you, uh, Madame VP and P R O. But before then, I just wanted to correct an impression. With respect to the two people per chapter, it's a national initiative, not Nashville. Um, also, as I mentioned earlier, we always get feedback after every convention. And the voices were very strong about, quote-unquote, Akisat taking back the convention. They say, for example, Eminem, Bill, where the army can be non-comp ten thousand dollars, but we see more. So that is why we came up with this idea. And yes, it's a minimum. It's not exactly a minimum. So the idea is if there are thirty active chapters and we have people giving the minimum of a thousand, that's sixty thousand dollars. Another thing we complained about, about M C and met you too, right? So if people come in and give this donation of a thousand, that removes the whole thing about M C and all that. We raised sixty thousand dollars right there without wasting time. Then I'm also gonna ask all the adults in the ballroom. So let's, the ballroom takes about nine hundred people. Let's say three hundred are um, kids. So the remaining six hundred who are adults, if they give at least fifty dollars, at least, that's another thirty thousand dollars right there. Sixty plus thirty is ninety thousand. Again, without uh, sweating, we've raised ninety thousand. So before anybody else comes in between the chairman, the co-chair, whatever, to give their own money, we've already made probably over a hundred thousand. So again, we're doing this in response to what the people want. Will it work out? We pray so. If not, then future conventions will fine-tune until we get there. Uh, with respect to the vendors, like the chair has said, officially, hotel, however, so that we're looking into. All right, so Madame VP, uh, Mr. Sianekbodum, P R O, Mr. Moison, uh, Mr. Basia Bud and Dr. Ebonakban in that order, then we move on to the next topic. Thank you. So Madame VP.
Yes, thank you, Mr. National President. Yeah, actually, I just want to, uh, I mean, say something in regards to what the comments that Mr. Hewa came made regarding the uh, discount. I don't know how, you know, Mr. You know, how he checked his. But the one thing is, I know that, um, I mean, many times I buy my ticket if it's this before I even get to see the discount. But I know in some other events, I've I've used the discount twice. And um, for me, I go to Delta airline website and look at my ticket, and while I'm booking the ticket, put in the discount code directly there. And that discount is applied. Usually, regular men cabins are like five percent. But if you do it first class, it might be up to the ten percent, but.
That money is too much, no?
No, it's you know, maybe even my my.
But we're not talking with yourself, please.
Yes, please. But co-host, help out. Madame Wemyah, are you still on?
There were money.
Can they be muted?
Yeah, I was muted. That's okay.
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, so I just want to inject that I'm not sure how it's done. I mean, how he, because for me, go to the Delta website, if it's Delta, get your ticket, but where it, there is a place for you to put the discount code. And the ticket is never higher than buying it directly. It's discounted from that Delta ticket. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Sianakbodum, National P R O.
Yeah, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, well, so, um, yeah, thank you. Uh, so I had two things, but, Mr. President, and you pretty much elaborated on the second one, and that was the uh, two-person, two-person, a thousand dollars because of the fact that, you know, some of the chapters are very small. But I wanted to basically provide a path forward for them to be able to to provide those kind of people that can offer the donation. So thank you for the elaboration. Um, the second thing is on the the flight, which I don't wanna, I don't wanna take too much time because it seems like everybody's already talking about it anyway. But what I, for me, from what I've experienced, when it comes to booking on third-party sites like Travelocity and Expedia, stuff like that, you're not directly booking with the airline. So in a sense, if you have to change your flight or anything like that, if there's something that happens with the flight.
Exactly.
You cannot go through the airline. But if you book directly through Delta, through United, they offer more benefits for you to be able to adjust your flight if you need to. So before we say that we want to re- remove that uh, discount from the primary airline, we need to go back to what I think it was Mr. Archibald said and Mr. Hughes. We need to reevaluate it, but we should not, we should not eliminate it. Because booking direct is, can be actually offer more benefit versus booking through trying to get the cheapest flight that's available. So that, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moison.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah.
Mr. Song, excuse me, please. Can I be a quick comment, just follow up on last comment? I want to be, I want to clarify.
I'm yielding, I'm yielding one minute to you, sir.
Okay, so what I'm saying is that I actually went to the three airlines directly to their website and checked their flight. And then it's different than when you click the link. When you click the link, it automatically puts in that code, that uh, group code, and it gives you a price. And it's always the last two flights that I have done, the last two times I've done that. I did it for the, to the trip to Miami. I've also done it to the trip to New York. In both situations, when I go directly to the airline side, when I click in the link, it's cheaper than when I click the link to book the flight. It's directly to that same airline, Delta, United, and America, or what I think is, I think, I don't, the three airlines. So that's what I'm saying. We need to do a homework before we claim that these things are giving us a discount, because from my experience, it has not.
And we totally understand. So at least I understood where you are coming from. So we're gonna do that for the future. Uh, Mr. Moison, continue, and then Mr. Basia Bud and Dr. Ebonakban.
Okay, I think Chief, uh, you cut me off when I was asking, you know, you, so.
Sorry.
You know, you. Look at. You're buying, give me a. Anyway, let me get to say what I wanted to say.
We, we were muted. We, we greet you back.
Yes, we were, we were grinning behind the mute.
So, uh, Mr. Nekan, um, a good job on obviously the planning committee and what you guys have done so far. Can't wait to be in Nashville, my city. Um, um, on the breakfast issue, uh, um, obviously, uh, but I, we have, I'm pleased that you straight out telling us we are on our own. That's what it is, that's what it is. There's nowhere around it. It shouldn't be where we look at trying to sneak anything in, so forget it. I mean, there's places around. Most of the time, we're gonna be too busy to eat anyway. The hotel has coffees and all, so I'm good with that. So we shouldn't make a big deal about the breakfast issue, okay? Uh, on the second issue for me is the fundraising. Uh, as far as each chapter, maybe, uh, hopefully recommending, recommending two people at least, or bringing some money and be on the table. That's should. Fundraising is gonna be constant. If we can do that, we do that all the time. But I often, most recently, have looked and asked this question about fundraising. You, isn't, isn't mostly fundraising part of the job of the uh, 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 the board of trustees? That's a question, Mr. President.
Okay, I'll answer that real quick. So like Madame Speaker had said, all hands should be on board. Uh, yes, the constitution might specify a particular branch of government, if you will, but at the end of the day, we're a team. So we need to do whatever we need to do. Uh, adding to that two-person minimum. Also wanted to say that it is not limited to acquivomites. Right now, speaking to someone who is not an acquivomite. So if you have anybody in your chapter, they don't have to be acquivomites, Nigerian, African, you know, as long as they're a human being and they're willing to donate. Those are the people we want to talk to. So thank you.
I understand all that. I guess we should all do all that, but I think we also start to do, put some pressure on the board of trustees to raise funds.
Noted.
In addition to what, uh, in Moison said, let me just say something just of the, you know, um, this is what, one incident that happened, um, last year in the hallway, it was on Sunday. I met somebody and she said that she wanted to donate five thousand dollars to Akisat on Saturday night, but unfortunately, she was not recognized. They didn't even say nothing to her. So she's not going to donate her money. So this year, instead of us, because we don't know what others people have in mind, so we decided to come up with that plan so that we can at least be able to recognize some people. Because it's not good, you have a fundraiser, and we only look at a few people in the high table. That is why we've always, you know, we've not been able to raise money these few years because our main concern, our main focus have always been in the high table. This year, we are trying to really, really open up and, you know, see how we can raise more funds, that we can fund our projects.
Right, thank you. But hold on, before anyone speaks, uh, we started about one hour, twenty minutes ago. We wanted to keep this thing to no more than two and a half hours, but let's keep our comments short. Mr. Basia Bud, Dr. Ebonakban, I see Dr. Wemekwan and Dr. Roberts. That should be it, uh, so we can move on to the next topic. So, Mr. Basia Bud. National Financial Secretary.
Uh, in Zongzio, you're for his own.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, okay, thank you for the opportunity. Um, mine is not any, it's just something that we, we have to look at these maybe for future um, conventions. Um, maybe new administration is something to be looked into. I think, uh, we have, uh, been doing uh, fundraising the exact same way from, for so long. And maybe simple addition of, uh, um, ideas could help. Um, one idea that, um, um, as we were just talking, it just come to my mind, and it's something that maybe we can look at it, not for this, but I don't know, my voice is kind of hmm, crazy here, but, um, so if we, um, look at the convention rate, I'm looking at dates, and we calculate how many convention, how many, um, this amount that we are charging for this convention. Um, we can eliminate some of this problem by just, um, adding a certain amount of money to whatever that convention cost is. And then become the funding for the, for the convent, for the fundraising part of it. Um, obviously, we've, we've, we all live here, we go to gala, we go to all these things. Um, when organizations or like people were saying, what is, what are the other organizations doing? Um, a lot of organizations do a lot of grand gala and like what we do. Probably we do even a lot more than or better. And they charge, sometimes you go to some of these gala, it's like five hundred dollars and two hundred and fifty dollars. So people coming there generally just know that this is fundraising event. Obviously, nobody's gonna go to a gala and that stuff food is like two hundred and fifty dollars. But people already know that it's for fundraising. So they pay that money in lieu of that fundraising, and they go there and they sit down and relax and eat their food and enjoy the evening with all the fun stuff that is going on. Nobody get bothered about, you know, getting money on the table and all, and stuff. So, hmm, I'm, I'm in a very strong opinion that as an organization, we need to try to look at those kind of, uh, options. I, I'm just doing calculation here right now, like we have about a thousand people come through this convention, maybe a thousand or more, but I'm just taking a thousand as a number. And if we calculate all of the convention fee and we decide, okay, the fundraising part of this registration is a hundred dollars or fifty dollars for. If it's a hundred dollars, then we are just, we just raise a hundred thousand dollars there, and we don't have to go there and start bargaining people like we normally do from back home. I'm, I'm really in a strong opinion that we need to change our way of doing fundraising. Gala is a big one, and I'm just picking that number out of a hat, but I'm sure uh, we have more than a thousand registration for some of these, uh, events. So i- if we charge extra hundred dollars and everybody that contribute and come to the convention, they come there and sit and have fun and enjoy, we don't have to worry about all these sort of things anymore. So, um, it's something we need to really investigate and see how we can do it. And, um, and do it and just use a different strategy, just like they do fundraising here in this country that we live in. You know, this idea of, uh, people on the high table and stuff like that is great, but it was great at home where you have politicians that come and do show-offs. And people here are very careful. They don't want anybody to start, you know, I R S following them or whatever. There may be people that are capable of doing all this stuff.
Yeah, thank you so much for your observation, and trust me, we also had that under detail. We also had that discussion during the convention planning. To see, maybe we can, maybe think about quality of a. To see maybe we can maybe think about quality over quantity. Like so many things we'll be trying in Nashville, Tennessee. It's, all you know, it's almost like, uh, we are, it, like experiment, let me put it like that. We moved away from downtown hotels to see how we can get hotels outside the downtown. We can also save money, you know, because everywhere hotels are really, really expensive. But that's why we're moving away from downtown to see how we can save costs. However, the distance from where this convention will be to downtown is about ten minutes. So that is, that is really, really perfect. And, you know, I, I, I understand your so, observation and it's something that we also talked about it, you know. Thank you.
Thank you. So Dr. Ibarban, Dr. Wemecan, Dr. Roberts, in that order, then we move on.
Uh, thank you, uh, uh, Mr. President. I appreciate it.
Point of information, Mr. President. Uh, go ahead, uh, Mr. Sukho. Yeah, you have already given us a list of those that were going to speak before we proceed to the next item. So I will see that you're adding more people. So if we can stick to that initial list, so we can move to the next item. If anybody has anything else in addition to that, they can use the chat room, please. Okay, this, this will be the last, absolute last. So go ahead. Well, like one, one minute at the most, so we can move on. Thank you.
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, Mr. President, you've actually answered, uh, uh, the question or comment that I had. It was, uh, yeah, and adding to Ms. Diana Fia. Uh, those two people per chapter is does, is not limited to members. Is anyone you can find, you know, in his in chapter, wherever we can find, are the two. So you've actually answered that. So I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. President.
And, and it's actually not only two though, if you have ten people.
Yeah, yes.
Exactly, yes.
Yes, exactly.
Two, minimum of two.
Minimum of two.
Uh, Dr. Wemecan, Dr. Roberts, and that's it.
President, uh, well, I don't wanna say, uh, you may just speak. I'm tired of memory dying, but what I'm gonna say is, and here can number one, you did very well, but I have to push back on something. I wrote a piece earlier this week or last week concerning any acquibom or anybody for that matter that comes to the convention. In my ID, in my Gikama five thousand, it gave me my, we get, that is rock and knock a bull. That's what we say in North Carolina.
Yeah, I know.
You had, you had had an award a couple of years ago with the bar. I didn't even have to ask that man. Okay, and I'm, I'm not even, I'm not calling him out, but I would have just used his name. He had already read a damn check. Oh, what am I saying? Hear me? You know, when people come in, we stop begging people, people, uh, I work on my convention, I get it here. I mean, five thousand, that is nonsense. You know what you have to do. So, um, um, he, he, we cannot babysit anybody. For the way to require them, all of you, you don't call me. You are sacrificing to be here. Some of those people are not here. So we need to take that mentality off. We need to tell them at the convention, you're coming to donate money. Don't, don't make people be like babies. Again, I go back, Boba, me, they're going to the women are growing young. What, what, what nonsense is that? And on, on the airline folks, as I'm talking to you, I'm in Virginia, I travel at least three or four times out of the month. I fly out many, I'm frequent fare. If you want that five percent, it's okay, but trust me, it's nothing. A airline, listen to me, the organ, remember any of you here that work for airline that knows a little about how airline operate. Tuesday nights, going to Wednesday morning. If you wanna book a ticket, find any airline, you will be surprised to be able to see the price that you want. Because what happened is this, when all the consolidators, M I D M A, it's here, the M A. I'm asking where is there, some of the, some of the thing that consolidators did not sell, they begin to give it back, go to Wednesday and Thursday back to the airline. So most of the time, you can find some cheaper rate, uh, flight in those days, if you are not already booked your flight. This experiment is good and, um, I just want to share that out. The five percent, uh, they'll type, sometimes you don't even see that percentage. You know, I'm not saying don't use it, but you can. But if you want to fly, I, I am, I'm a living witness how you can get discount. Here, they may mention something that is also interesting. You can follow that pattern too. Mr. President, I don't wanna take more time. I have a whole bunch of my mind to say, but I'm gonna just leave it alone. Let it, let the meeting move forward.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. And I encourage everyone else to do that as well, uh, in the interest of time. All right, Dr. Roberts and then Miss Etum will round it up so we can go to the next topic.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President and everybody. I just wanted to kind of like, um, information, uh, uh, giving, um. I just, uh, for the airlines, I know we, it's ma- it may not sound like much like everybody has already said. But I personally tried getting, uh, some discount, uh, 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 from those small airlines. And they all really want you to give them a block of, guarantee them a block of people that might want, uh, that you are going to give to them before they can even offer you discounts. So what I'm seeing, I would, uh, with that, with, um, Delta, I'm not saying it's perfect, but we should try and keep maintain that because it's a, it's a step to the future that we can, actually with the, with the, with the large, with the organization that we are, we can use that in the, maybe in the near future and add something bigger for that. We've been, your part, we've been partnering with you for these many years. Then we can ask, take a step further to ask them for bigger, um, discount. But it's okay to keep it who, if you wanna use it, you use it. Otherwise you can use what Dr. Iguantos said. And, um, on the, on the, uh, on the fundraising front, Mr. Basie, I think I suggested something earlier about us. I know we might have a committee right now. I think your ideas come, just come right on, on time for what we have, what we think from the, uh, chapter president perspective, that we can do better by having committee with, uh, you know, uh, 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 out of the box thinking and, and, and ideas that we've, maybe we've never explored before. This is the twenty first century and also things have changed. We want different ideas. So your idea would be perfectly, it's, could be perfectly explored. You could be one of those committee members. But I know we can, we can, uh, fix, uh, take a look, take a step into fixing this by having a committee of like-minded people that want to explore better opportunities for fundraising. Uh, and also for, uh, hosting conventions in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, uh, Miss Etum.
So, um, but, um, but thank you so much for your audience. Uh, I really want to reiterate this, uh, at the convention, we will have the Zell, the Zell in, info and all the QR codes for anybody that wants to donate. So it's not only, we are not only focusing on, you know, on the high table. We want to make sure that everybody have the opportunity to donate. You know, like we've normally, you know, like we normally do, we will have all those QR codes for anybody to scan and donate. And information will be on the screen as well so that we can donate. But, but, uh, thank you so much, everybody for your time. We look forward to hosting everyone in Nashville, Tennessee. Uh, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Convention Chair. Um, doing a great job so far. Before we go to the next topic, I just wanted to remind everyone that, uh, veterans and active members in uniform get a discount for registration. Uh, and also with respect to numbers, uh, hotel reservation numbers, and I'll put the link to the hotel reservation number in the chat room. We're at about thirty-three percent. Uh, don't take that number to be low. Things can change overnight. So do get your rooms now. Uh, also, sorry, one more thing. Um, even though it's a hundred and fifty dollars per member, we did start off by offering a lot of hundred and thirty dollars. That expired March twentieth. Another three months' time, so that's I believe June twentieth. It's now one forty, it's gonna be one forty between now and then. After June twenty-first, it goes up to the one fifty. And July twentieth, we cut off online registration. You can only register at the convention at that point. So again, now it's one forty, it'll go to one fifty. That's for members. And then one fifty caps it off after June twenty, or July twenty-first. No more online registration. You do that at the convention. So thank you very much. All right, um, go to the next topic of our conversation, which is the upcoming national presidential elections. Mr. Karabouma is the chair of the electoral committee and he'll be coming on shortly. For those of us who do not know, we do have, I believe for the first time in our history, three engineers running at the same time. Engineer Mangulakban Akisan Philadelphia, and I'll give them an opportunity to speak. Engineer Dr. Mbo Akiko of Akisan San Diego. And I, uh, engineer is so I'm like way of Akisan Detroit Metro. So before I hand over to, uh, Mr. Karabouma to address the team here, I'll give each of the, in that order I just mentioned, engineer Akpan, engineer Akikun, engineer Akwayong. Please limit your comments to no more than one and a half minutes. So, engineer Mangulakban, are you on?
Yes, Mr. President.
All right, please proceed.
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. President. Um, good morning to everyone present. By my time, uh, east coast time is afternoon. I believe it's still morning in, uh, west coast. Good morning, Ukangn, Aquaywomi, Son.
Yeah.
Again, my name's, uh, Aparawa and engineer Manu Laquon out of, uh, the city of brotherly law Philadelphia. And I'm one of the, uh, candidate for the position of the national president of our great and esteemed organization, Akisan. I am contesting for this position of the national president of Aquaywomi State Reservation of Nigeria, USA Incorporated. I'm not just coming here to answer the, uh, name, Mr. President, but I'm here to bring in a positive impact and a positive change. First of all, um, my first convention that I went to is where I met my wife. And we are still married, happily married with two kids now. So I can comfortably tell you that I, um, and my family is Akisan's family because I met my wife out of, uh, Akisan convention. And I believe a lot of people here, um, in our, our association have such stories. However, I am so proud, I am proud son of Aquaywomi State. I am proud of my roots. I'm proud of my heritage. I want all of us to look at it, that we want to re
boarding in progress.
This association, to make it a place that all of us feel the sense of community. That we, I want to force, refoster the sense of community in our people. I want to bring back our heritage, our culture back to bear. I want to bring back a source of fundraising outside the traditional convention that we are all yearning for, saying, oh, conven, we're gonna raise money at the convention. Yes, convention is one of the ways that we raise money for this organization especially. Now is the major part of, uh, uh, raising funds for the organization. But we can have so many other ways that we can bring in money. So much thanks to this present administration that has introduced this association into different methods of approach of getting money into the association. But I will go out there and advocate and network for good ways and other avenues of making this association a more community, a more reliable, a more in-depth association that all of us will be proud of. And I will be a leader that lead and celebrate every achievement of our members. That also will encourage our members to dip into what is going on, be part of it and look into how this association should be greater than what it is today. Because every administration want to be greater than yesterday. And my administration will bring this association better, more better than what it was yesterday. I will also engage the Akisan women and youth. Not only the youth, we have, uh, uh, a group that we said, we may call it young adults, the young entrepreneurs, the old. We will bring everybody to bed because we have a talent to show. They have a talent to show. We will get all our talents together that will produce a greater and better organization that all of us will be proud of. I will celebrate every achievement of the members of this great organization. I will highlight their accomplishment that will serve and inspire others to be part of, to be engaged and to make sure that our association is what they are proud of. My administration will be open and accountability and open communication will be a watchword and a cornerstone of this administration. Be it the, um, decision processes, decision-making processes, be it, be it the financial processes, be it the activities that are going to happen, like what is happening today, the activities that are going to come. It will be an open administration that every member.
Engineer Akpan, we lost you if you're still speaking.
You say?
Oh, we didn't hear you again. Uh, but there's a request to, for all the candidates to turn on their videos.
Okay.
Yeah, we lost you for maybe ten seconds. And please wrap it up so we can go to the next set of people.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. President. My administration will be open, uh, accountability and, uh, open, uh, communication, open information for all the members to be aware and be connected to whatsoever that is going on. Be it with the, um, the, the executive, the board of trustees and the council of chapter president. The collaboration will be there for all of us and our voices, the voices of the members of the community will be heard, will be shared and will be respected. And every member.
Remind him he's the.
Mr. President, we lost him. Also, nobody's enforcing time limit on this. He's gone on for almost five minutes so far. So we need to.
Yes, wrap it up, engineer Akpan, in the interest of everybody and time, please.
That, tha- thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. President, and thank you so much, everybody. My vision to redirect this organization will make, be the one to lead this organization to the I S I. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll go to engineer, Dr. Akiko. Like I said, someone had put in, uh, a request to see the candidates faces. So but let's stick to the time and engineer Akiko, you're next.
Yeah, Mr. President, thank you so much. And, uh, greetings to the, uh, Akisan community. Greetings to jail membership. Um, for those who don't know me, engineer, Dr. Mbo Akiko, um, as noted, uh, running for the highest office in Akisan to be, uh, the next national president. So, uh, first, uh, I do wanna thank everyone for joining this, uh, morning, afternoon, uh, wherever you're at. Um, thank you for joining. Uh, also want to congratulate the, uh, with some new officers, the CCP officers. Congratulations on your new role of leadership. Uh, looking forward to partnering with you, Dr. Roberts, speaker, and, uh, Richard, deputy speaker, and Clay Tewes, um, secretary. And also the two, uh, chapter presidents, uh, newly minted chapter presidents. Congratulations and, and welcome to, uh, to council. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, um, like I said, I'm running for the office of national president. Um, for those who don't know me, I have been, uh, part of Akisan for a very long time. Um, since two thousand and nine of, in leadership roles, increasing role of leadership. Uh, it goes even longer than that if you add, uh, non-leadership roles. So what you're gonna get from me is Akisan brand loyalty and commitment. So uh, I've demonstrated that loyalty and commitment since two thousand and nine, when I started a chapter in, in Denver, Colorado. Brought that chapter to national stage, um, and also, uh, opened the chapter in San Diego. In two thousand and thirteen, hosted our family and members out in San Diego and, um, brought that chapter thriving today to national as well as hosting the convention, uh, more recently last, last year. So um, and for those who were at the convention, just a spectacular location, um, to, uh, really have a, a community celebrate themselves and enjoy, uh, beautiful sunny San Diego, uh, America's finest city. I'm a family man, four wonderful kids. Uh, oldest one is in college, a freshman. Uh, the second one is about to join him in, in college. Uh, my third in, uh, uh, high school as a freshman, and then my daughter in middle school. Uh, also a professional, so engineering, a professional in aerospace and defense industry. Uh, same way, I've, I've committed myself and life to the, uh, to the defense industry since I was an intern. I've also given, committed myself to Akisan, uh, like I said, over the past fifteen years. Um, never left, never went anywhere, stayed through the trials and tribulations of Akisan and helped Akisan come up on the other side. And now we have a well-hauled machine uh, that we wanna make sure we continue to drive, uh, forward. Uh, I'm God-fearing, I'm really collaborative. Uh, you've heard, I'm the immediate past speaker of the council of chapter presidents. Uh, my teammates sent me there for two terms in that role. I really partner and collaborated with each and every council member to drive a lot of the policies that you saw. Uh, the CCP is the, uh, policymaking body of Akisan. Uh, every year, we sat down, we looked at priorities, um, together as a team and, uh, executed that, uh, priorities. I'm result-driven, um, result-oriented. I have a significant track record of excellence. Uh, as an example, when I was the, uh, chair of the immunity trust fund, helped the association recover fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, and I protected that, uh, funds, uh, till this day safeguarded Akisan funds, produced bank statements for the association. Uh and I protected that the funds uh till this day safeguarded Akisane funds, produced bank statements for the association. Um whether it's the um recently passed convention, single-handedly helped raise thirty thousand dollars from sponsors to help. Uh with that uh event, or whether it's, you know, ask different chapters when you have events, I partner, uh contribute, I support, um send flyers and things to really help. Uh so again, significant experience with with the association. Um even more recently, uh the uh technology and innovation summit, you just heard the chair talk about, we're gonna have the second one. Uh I conceptualized and envisioned that, you know, we always wanna do something new, elevate our association. And so I uh, you know, brainstormed, reached out to significant impactful Akwabomites in critical places. To come in and host that uh technology innovation summit, it was wildly successful. Um it was an opportunity to not only mentor uh career development, but also engage the different communities as well. Um financial stewardship and innovation, uh that uh, you know, my background is an engineer. I wanna continue to drive technology and innovation, I call it one Akisane transformation. Uh this is where we're gonna continue to drive uh change and transformation in the association. I was part of the team that uh invested, we initially funded and donated money to test QuickBooks Financial Management System. We prototyped that in the Button Finance Committee of which uh I'm a secretary. Um for that committee and then we brought that to Akisane, you know, that capability is really thriving today. And one of the things we wanna do is continue to optimize that capability to help continue to drive association forward. So a lot of financial um integrity, help us really manage our financials with with that uh application. Um you know, leadership and policy and constitution committee, you know, I served in that committee. Uh that a lot of the changes that we partnered with the escrow and the board of trustee that you see today. I was part of the policy and constitution committee that architected a lot of those offerings. Uh the CCP and the org structural changes you see today, I was part of that. The uh um ad hoc committees, when you see the electoral committee, but in the finance committee, the policy and constitution committee, I was part of that uh team. When you see where uh Akisane Secretariat, you know, in my administration, we could pick talent from anywhere. Um Madam Speaker talked about talent and uh you know, resources. But now you don't have to have all the uh members of your secretariat to come out of the same chapter. We changed the policy so you can pick talent from anywhere. And so really looking forward to partnering and collaborating to help drive that change and bring uh uh things like that to the association. Uh finance, uh financial secretary, that's another chain that that was implemented. I was muted, so I just unmuted myself.
Well, wait, I said, um try and wrap up to in the interest of time, thank you.
All right, thank you, so yeah, I'll wrap up, so my my theme is around dream and we we will go into depth on the dream, the dream team. How we collaborate with uh all the stakeholders to drive Akisane forward, how we make sure that we uphold and uh respect that constitution. That constitution is very nicely written, if we follow it, a lot of issues we see will not see that. How do we bring in our youths and young professionals to come in, that's who we wanna turn this association to, okay? How do we maintain a diverse, uh equitable and fair organization? So we bring in talent from women's wing, you know, from the youth's wing and from all the different entities to uh to really support the association. So ladies and gentlemen, I'm asking for your vote to continue to transform, elevate our association. I've been there for fifteen years, looking forward to being there for the next, and I I always end with this. The future never just happens, it is created. Akisane community together, let's imagine the future of Akisane then created. We have done that, we've done that in the past, we're doing that right now, and I'm looking forward to partner with you to continue to transform, excel and drive uh. Association to the twenty-first century, thank you very much uh for the opportunity and uh looking forward to the continued partnership. Mister President, back over to you, sir.
Thank you very much, engineer Akiko, um engineer Song Ekbe, are you ready?
I am ready, Akwabom is sound.
Yeah.
Ivan, you know you. Okay, and getting getting sorry, I'm sure most of you know me, for those that don't, I'm from the Metro Detroit chapter, my wife is the chapter president here. Uh you know, I've been active in Akisane for over twenty years and again, there's a number of write-ups, it goes all the way back to my first convention in. In uh San Francisco chapter and to San Francisco in two thousand and and one, and so I've been active ever since then. Um from the chapter level, you know, I've talked about it agnostium, from secretary to to chapter president, from. There I moved on to the uh national executive, uh so I've got some experience, I know what it's like to run an association, to run a secretariat, the day-to-day, the grind. Um the amount of work and energy that you need to put into it um to to make sure it's successful and. And I gotta tell you that, you know, when I look back at the Michigan secretariat that we had, two thousand and eight to two thousand and ten. It was one of the more successful executives that 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 um Akisane had. Uh we left that executive with thirty-two, writing a check for to the board of trustees for thirty-two thousand dollars. And and I'm not saying it was all me, it was a team effort, that's why I say Michigan team. And and so that is the same mindset that I'll be taking when we bring the secretariat back to Michigan. You know, so um from the the secretariat, I transitioned to the board of trustees. I was on the board for six years as a board treasurer. Um and you know, I presented at numerous uh council meetings, numerous financial reports, numerous conventions during my term as a board of trustees uh. Uh treasurer. And so um during my time on on the board of trustees and even while I was uh the national secretary, I've I was privileged. To have collaborated with hundreds of final Quaibomites like you, those committed few like you that have joined this roadshow. And and so it's impressive, uh but at times it can be a little difficult to to wonder why more people aren't coming on board. How come there's only fifteen, sixteen people on this roadshow before council, a major council meeting coming up? And so, you know, I, you know, that's a side note, but again, the main point is that I was able to collaborate with a number of these fine. Committed individuals like you to drive change into this organization, to drive policies, initiatives. And opportunities for us to outreach and touch the lives of many people, those here in the US and back home in in Nigeria. And so that is the same focus that I wanna bring into the office. Uh when I become the national president, it's a collaborative mindset, one that greets everyone with a smile, a welcome. And and one that is set on the focus of making Akisane a better organization. Let me just take a step back and talk about what are some of the challenges and opportunities that we have with this great organization that we all love. You know, I've I've mentioned it many times is that, you know, we don't quite, we talk about the fact that there's only nineteen people, fifteen people on this call. There's a lack of confidence that we that people have in Akisane, and I know the president, uh uh Mister Utoro, you've done an excellent job. And we need to continue to drive that confidence into people for them to see that this organization is built on accountability. And that is what I'm gonna bring, I'll set performance targets that's visible, that'll be status at council meetings and at the convention. We need to build trust, I'm gonna hold quarterly chop-up sessions with folks, I'm gonna send out quarterly Akisane Today update status and. Where I am relative to my seven-point agenda, that Akisane Today will go out every quarter showing. These seven initiatives that I said I'm gonna come into office and do, this is where I am, here's the progress. And it's gonna be visible for everyone to see. Gonna function as one team, as I mentioned, the Michigan team, and then also there's gonna be Michigan team too, uh when we're successful in bringing the secretariat here. Pulling all the branches together, the the council of chapter presidents, the board of trustees. We're gonna be moving all in the same direction to make this organization a stronger organization. One of the other opportunities that we have is to set a clear strategic vision on.
Hello, Missy Song. You're on mute. Missy Song, you're on mute.
Everybody gets muted, what's going on?
You've muted yourself.
Unmute yourself, oh, and please, I wrap up in the interest of time, thank you. Unmute.
That's a strategy to let me know time is out and the host mutes me. I like that strategy. Anyway, in in wrapping up, I, you know, I just wanna say that, yeah, um you know, I'm privileged and and it's an exciting time for all of us that are. Uh here, active within Akisane, we have, you know, three strong candidates that all feel the same way about this organization. And it's a privilege, it's it's fantastic, typically you have to beg people to run for office. Or you have some, you know, individuals that uh may not necessarily be qualified. Uh but again, this year is a different year, I look forward to what's to come over the next several months. Um I also pledge to work closely with each of you regardless of the outcome of the 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 election. And again, the goal here is to make Akisane a stronger organization, and I know we all have that in heart, so thank you very very much, everyone, bye-bye.
I thank you very much, engineer Song, and to the other two candidates, um thank you for presenting your case. Um but I do apologize to everyone, it was more for people to say hi and then that was it, but. I do realize for some people, this might be the only opportunity to get to see and hear from the candidates, so. I guess at the end of the day, it's a good thing that they did get to present their cases. Uh there will be a debate in New York and I will let Mister Karabomom speak more to that, and that event will be streamed live, so again, you'll get to see them. Um live as they speak and defend their cases, so Mister Karabomom, are you ready to present?
Oh yes, I'm ready.
All right, you have a screen to share, are you gonna be to share mine?
Oh yeah, you can share yours if it's there, thank you very much.
Give me one second, all right, so this is the schedule here that you sent me.
Okay. Why is it all over the place, it's not on one piece anymore?
Um yeah, but I've been too small, so start from the, well, I guess go with yours, but you can start from the left and then the top right, then bottom right, sorry about that.
All right, I'll do that. All right, thank you, everyone, good afternoon, good morning to those on the west coast, and then good afternoon for all the ones on the east coast. Um that was a wonderful presentation by the candidates, uh let me put my camera on. Yeah, can everyone see?
I can see you.
Okay, that's great.
I can see you.
All right, thank you very much for those that can see.
I, Nick, we can see you.
I can not see you.
Yeah, thank you, for this year is gonna be a wonderful year, it's gonna be a different kind of election. And um like I was saying, it's gonna be a test of our constitution. It's gonna be a test of sincerity of Akisane people. It's gonna be a test of our honesty, and it's gonna be a test of our integrity, I rely on. Um looking at the timetable.
Excuse me, I think we still have the screen, we, some of us cannot see your face, we still have the the shade page.
We can see both, I can see both, you need to change it on your side.
You have to move your camera or something. Uh he looks good, that's all I can do.
I could, I could see my, I can see myself, so maybe you need to.
Okay.
Um so the um the timetable is out, we had to sit down and deliberate with the members of the electoral committee. Like I was saying, it's gonna be a test because it's the first time that we're doing this. Uh we need everyone's cooperation, we need all the chapter presidents to cooperate and just go by the constitution. We are not inventing anything new here, everything that is there comes from the constitution. We're not changing anything, everything like you see here is from the constitution, I repeat that again. So that's why you need to read your constitution from page to page, take a closer look at it because um there are a lot of things in it. And uh we didn't do it, I didn't do it, I wasn't a member of the constitution review committee, but I just happened to be the chairman. Of the electoral committee, uh first off, for those of you who don't know me, my first name is Akaravon, last name is Omor. I'm from Marcus Sanchez, speak Bay Maryland chapter. I forgot to do that from the beginning. So the kickoff date is gonna be March the thirty-first, is gonna be the last date for chapters to send their letters of intent. Letters of intent mean that the chapter is going to meet and then the chapter president with the secretary, with some members will sign and certify that their candidate is ready to go. Whoever they selected, that he has to be there. Um April nineteenth, the week of the convention, I did talk to the chapter president of New York. As he have to talk with him again, I most likely talk with the planning committee over there at the council meeting. Let's see, uh he gave us a slot to do um a debate. But that will hang on on the council meeting that we have to finish on time, and then we do the debate before. We go to the fundraising, and that will be on Saturday. Our initial plan was to be on Friday, but he said, no, the Friday is gonna be the welcome, so in New York, they're really ready for us. They're gonna do the welcome um party for us on the meeting grid on Friday, so everything is going to be on Saturday. Um April thirtieth, the electoral committee sends out determination letters to chapters. That showed intent as qualified or not qualified. So make sure your chapter pay your dues, pay everything there's supposed to be. Um because when we take a look at all letter of intent. We'll send that response back on April thirtieth, pay the constitution. Um with that being said, uh chapters must must inform the electoral committee when they will have their election. So that as April thirtieth, chapters need to send out the memo or email when they're gonna be conducting their election. Because like we said, like I mentioned first, it's gonna be a test of our integrity, how do we go from here? So that will be done because if your chapter don't tell us when and just go ahead and conduct the election, pay the constitution, that election will not be valid. So when I say that, take a look at your constitution very well, I'll repeat that all the time, that's a reference point, please go back and take a look at it, clearly it states there. May thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Uh that's when we look at chapters that are eligible, chapters that showed intent, they have thirty days from April thirtieth. To bring themselves to the good standing. We are not going to take any other brand-new chapter that will say, I have a candidate. These are the candidates that already made the deadline of March thirty-first by sending their intent. Then we take a look at it, if you're not, if you have something that you need to fix, we tell you to go ahead and fix it and send it back to us. So at that time, we should be able to clear you at May thirtieth. June fourteenth, the electoral committee responds to chapters that brings itself in good standing. So that June fourteen, we know who is who, is your chapter, up to date, everything is good to go, at that time you get a memo from the electoral committee. June twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, the electoral committee publishes qualified candidates. And their manifestos on June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, or at least forty-five days before the convention. That's what the constitution states, but we will do it before, between June twenty-first and twenty-fifth. On June twenty-second, we're gonna have another debate, that will be a zone debate, which we intend to have meeting with all the candidates before we go to New York. We intend to have meeting with all the candidates after that, uh March thirty-first, before we go to New York, and then we'll discuss that. Uh June twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, chapters conduct selection, no sooner than forty-five days. That will be on June twenty-fifth, before the annual convention, and not later than seven days prior to the convention. So as we said, elections must take place between June twenty-fourth, twenty-fourth and August first. Chapters send information to the electoral committee when they will conduct the election. So we have to get this from chapter presidents, we'll make sure we're gonna emphasize this when we get to the council meeting so that they know. That they have to let the electoral committee know so we can send a representative or one of our members that is close by can go there to be an observer. August first, all chapter elections completed at chapter level. At that time, all the elections is completed, then you're gonna send uh the results of the election. Most likely, we're going to be there, or we're gonna appoint someone to oversee what your chapter is doing. That's for the national president, for the BOT election. July the ten, twenty twenty-four is the letter of intent, not later than one month from convention. So that's when the card update, you have to send that in. And then July seventeen, we send notifications to the chapter. Then the BOT election is gonna be on August ninth, twenty twenty-four, right there, that's the only election that will do. Right there, that's the only election that will do, uh, not from the chapters, that will be conducted at the convention during the business meeting. Um, that's all I have for you guys. Uh, hope to see you in New York. And uh, if you have questions for me, I'm ready. I'm gonna take the questions. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Bob. Before I open it up to questions, um, I just wanted to say that uh this, uh, what is being shown on the screen was emailed to every member of the council. Having said that, I'll still put it in the council chat room, so that in turn, as council members, well, in particular, chapter presidents, you send this out to your members. That is where, that uh, that way everybody is informed. So um, yeah, I'll send that out, so that everyone is on the up and up on this. Uh, any questions for Mr. Caribou?
Mr. President, no question, but but just just an area that I need to make sure we 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 clarify.
Okay, please.
And that would be the timeline to send the information to um where the chapters notify the uh notify the electoral committee of when the election uh is going to take place. And we need to verify that, because I see it written on the April thirtieth timeline, but I'm not sure whether it's required.
April, April thirtieth. April thirtieth.
Okay, I'd just like to verify that, that I don't remember that one. So I don't remember that day, so.
April thirtieth, that's the date.
Okay, I'll double check.
Anybody else?
He read the constitution.
Yeah, I know. He's been following his documents, so I just wanted to make sure.
He said he read it, so you should read it back to back to.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, Bob. Thank you very much, and um I I I I am sure Mr. Moore will not mind me saying that uh he has true dedication and descent. I think he just returned from Nigeria this morning, and he had time to attend this road show, but thank you very much. Thank you very much. Um, let me check what's in the chat room before we move on. Phil, if I did not get election information sent to us. Um, Mr. Michael Latom says, Phil, if I did not get that information. Well, I I guess that will be up to the secretary of the Electoral Committee, but when he did ask me for your email.
I was saying, I will send it to you, uh, Mr. Michael Latom. I even talked to your candidate, so I discussed that timetable with him, but I'll send it to you, Mr. Michael. I'm sorry for that.
Because we 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 got the email addresses from what council provided us on the website. So if that's not the correct address, please let us know, so we can update the website accordingly. Thank you. All right, um, yes, next on the screen. So earlier on, for those who kind of joined late, the current chairman of the Constitution Committee, Mr. Kletusudon, the secretary of the CCP, was supposed to let us know something that is very important. So any policy changes, constitutional changes, that way, uh, you know, when we go to a convention and ratify these things, it's not like a first time we're hearing all these things. So in fact, the road shows were set up specifically for this, to let us know of any policy and constitutional changes coming up. So at this time, I'm gonna hand over to Mr. Kletusudon for the next eight to ten minutes to go over those changes. Mr. Sudo, are you ready?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, for the sake of uh interest, I'm gonna ask if Akaribon can leave this on the screen. Uh, because I think this information here is very, very important, as we share with the rest of the team, as far as what the Constitution Committee is working on, how we're working on the next uh uh minute in the coming year. Uh, before I begin, I want to thank uh to thank all the great men and people in the past that have contributed to making sure that we, as an organization, have the strong and solid uh guideline behind us uh to support and protect, and as a matter of fact, we will look our association to where we want to be. We call him Mr. uh Constitution. Uh Hugh, we are grateful to you uh for your talent and gift to the organization. And we continue to look forward to that continued support. Uh, when uh Eugenik was talking about his vision for our organization, he talked about uh some of the guidelines and some of the changes that uh the Constitution Committee has brought into our association, and how those guidelines and support continues to help uh to highlight our association to the twenty first century. Uh, I, when I stepped into this new duty and responsibility, I I I count myself privileged uh to be a part of this team uh to see how best we can organize organize our association to a place where we will all be proud of Akisun as our association. Uh, for the sake of our conversation today, I want to narrow my uh my presentation today on one basic area. After listening to the uh the speaker, you know, outline nine visions that we have as as the leadership to make a P C C uh to to the group. And that area that I want to focus my attention on is on membership. Uh, what is it that constitutes uh the membership uh into our association? When you look at our constitution, the guy was talking earlier on about the need for every single person to take a look at our constitution, and the invitation that the Constitution Committee has to, especially all the chapter presidents, is to make sure we print out the Akisun constitution and have it close by us. Because going forward, we, our recommendation is that when we present anything we are presenting to the benefit of our group, that we make sure that that presentation and that thought of mine is rooted in our constitution. That way, we will spend less time arguing, fighting, or quarreling over whatever ideas they presented. And so to start with, a chapter in good standing, our constitution, we go to our lotion. He says, this is a chapter that has com- uh complied with Article uh seven specifically on finance. And what does Article seven say? I wanna take a moment and share with everybody here what that article says. Article uh seven says that the fiscal year of the National Association shall be from September first to August thirty first of the following year. And section two, number C, says every chapter of the association shall pay an obvious registration fee as shall be determined by the National Council from time to time to the National Association by December thirty first of each year. Now, going by that, we are in the fiscal year of September first to August thirty first. And so the dues that should be expected by the secretary, by all the chapters, should have been by December thirty first. And so when each of us has not paid their dues as at today, is not in line as far as what the constitution is stating here, as you know, as sort of being in the good stand. And so when the national president was, you know, inviting every chapter to pay in their dues, their registration before, so that uh the chapter planning committee, uh Honorable Anekan, will have something in his group to begin to work on preparing for our chapter. It is in line with our constitution to make sure that these are in place by the thirty first of December each year, and not on the day or when we show up at the national convention. And so this is the invitation that we want to give to every national president to extend this invitation uh to all their chapters, that they due for the following year, because it looks like when we pay it in December, it is for the calendar year of that year. No. It is for the fiscal year of September to August the following year. And so when the dues are not paid by December the thirty first, we are not following the constitution. And so when we meet at our chapter, you know, council meetings, and we are voting, the next question would be, are the votes that we are receiving from chapters that are in good standing? Because if the chapters are already in good standing, are the votes valid? These are some of the things that we want everyone to pay very, very close attention. Akaribon said, please, all these deadlines that are here are from the constitution. Chapter presidents, please, we are asking every single one of us to be students of the constitution. So that when April the thirty eighth comes, and then the Electoral Committee has not received your information, we do not want it to be a problem during the convention, because you did not send your information to the Electoral Committee. And so I am, I left, I asked that this be left on, so that if you've not received it, or if you want to handwrite it, that you take a moment and and write it. Put these dates in place. Because if you look at it, between today and April the thirty eighth, we are just looking at barely four weeks. And some of our chapters have already had uh your your general meeting, and the information has not been given to them. If you are yet to have your general meeting between now and April, you know, the twentieth, please ensure that you spend time to discuss this with your executive. A date is set, so that you will be able to meet this deadline of April the period. This is very, very important, because it's going to reduce a whole bit of arguments during the convention, during the chapter, and we're specifically meeting at at a convention. And we are also reaching out to every single member of this association with the understanding of the duties and responsibility of the Constitution and Policy Committee to formulate policies and make a consultation and recommend constitutional changes to let everyone know that we are open and ready for any feedback that you have as far as some of the things that we could do differently that will benefit our association. So on behalf of the Constitution Committee, I just wanna share this with everybody, uh that uh we are open for business. There are a few more, few other things that we'll present uh to the House. I will meet at a council meeting. Uh, but we are giving this invitation to everyone, and also opening this as a challenge for each chapter to take a moment and look at the constitution, especially when it comes to members or chapters that are in good standing. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, uh, very much, Mr. Chair, for that presentation. Um, I see Dr. Roberts has a question for you. Dr. Roberts, Madam Speaker.
Yes, um, thank you, and and I think the question is mostly for everybody else. So um, uh, and also to Mr. the co- committee chair. So with all this information now coming, you know, being a reminder, because we already know these exist. Um, so, and we are looking at election coming up. So when we have chapters that are not in good standing, are those chapters allowed to vote? Are those votes valid? So I think these are the things that we going to uh take a look at, and uh if somebody knows about that, um, they can answer that. If chapters that are not in good standing are the vote valid? And then I would maybe use this opportunity to ask Mr. President, if at all possible, uh, maybe they, uh, the president and the financials um secretary of the group of the Akisun to maybe please post, since we are looking a very close election post, maybe two to three years of the chapter's standing, so that we know which chapter is ready to vote and which chapters vote we can accept. Because we need to take this organization seriously by following the constitution. And I think one of the things that we are gonna be doing in the next few uh months is to see, we created a lot of constitution. We have a really good constitution and structures, but are we following, are we using them as we should? So I think these are the things that we need, we as a group needs to be transparent about which chapter is ready to vote and which of those votes is valid. So if anybody knows that, then you can answer.
Yes, uh, that's a very good question. I'm going to work with Madame Treasure. Unfortunately, she went out of town on business this weekend, but I will work with her to uh not not wait till that last minute, but I would even say as early as next month. So that going to the council meeting, we all know our obligations, you know, way in advance of the convention itself. And I wanna thank all the chapters that have paid their dues, their convention dues already in advance, and their annual dues. So thank you very much.
Yeah, and and if I could read um the uh the response here from Mr. Hugh, then Mr. Constitution himself. It says here, only chapters and members in good standing are privileged to participate in the national election. So I'm just bringing this up, and I know I already mentioned something earlier, but we need to be, we're all getting excited about election. So we wanna make sure that when you are sending in that your election or planning to host your election, we're going to be scrutinizing every single chapter in in addition, in, you know, you know, looking at their background or that activities for the financial activities the past few years. Are you in good standing to participate in the election? So that's a food for thought. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. Well, let me make one quick comment, please. Yeah, so uh, Mr. Chair, so I went back to that question that I was posing, because it was bothering me. Uh, Mr. Chair Caribou, so I went back to that question regarding the red comment on April thirtieth. April thirtieth. So the chapters only really required, because remember that they're doing this election, they're doing the election forty five days before the convention and uh no more than forty five days before the convention and no later than seven days prior to the convention. Uh, the requirement is that they should notify the electoral committee uh within seven days. They have seven days before the local election for the national president. So I think, look at that comment again about notifying electoral committee thirty days, I mean, uh, April thirty, that may be inaccurate. I need to double check that. The other thing I was going to say is, within the constitution, the only benefits are bestowed to those who are in good standing. So if you're a national candidate running for the office, you have to be in good standing with your chapter, and then your chapter has to be in good standing with the with the national. So only benefits for Akisun are bestowed only to those in good standing, either as a chapter or as an individual. So if your chapter is not in good standing, then you do not derive any benefit at Akisun when it comes to participation in national election. You can vote if you want in your local chapter, but when it comes to the national, the electoral committee has the capacity, the ability, and the authority to disregard the election.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so this is a a a general message to everyone, especially those that are attending this uh road show uh from different chapters. When you go back home, ask your president, are we in good standing with the national? So that when he comes back to report to you in your general meeting that your vote was not accepted, you should know why it was not accepted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much, sir. Well, thank you very much for that presentation as well. The key take home, uh, based on when I ran four years ago, read the constitution and stick to the deadlines. They're very clear-cut. There's no ambiguity in those dates. So thank you once again. All right, so um, let me see that time here. We'll try and wrap up in the next ten, fifteen minutes. Uh, real quick, I have mentioned the twenty twenty four medical mission. Um, this is more details about it. Let me admit somebody here real quick. One second. All right, so May of this year is gonna be very busy for the National Secretariat. We're not gonna have the typical medical mission as we normally do, you know, treating people, operations and all that. Um, we're going to go to as many hospitals as possible to pay off the bills of uh the, of at least one person per hospital of someone in need. We're also going to donate uh medical equipment, as in things like blood pressure monitors, sugar monitors, things of this nature, eyeglasses to people in those hospitals. Um, I also want to stress that the money for this is not coming from the association. It's going to be based on donations. A couple of people have already promised. I look forward to other donations as well. If you know people who have medical equipment, like the blood pressure monitors, uh, sugar monitors, you know, eyeglasses, things like that are not too bulky, that can be taken on a plane, we would really appreciate that. Uh, again, this is gonna be towards the ending of May slash the first week of June. Uh, put up the links for donations online in the chat room. Please check those out, but of course, over time, I'm going to be sending this out. So again, um, it's not gonna be traditional medical mission. It's going to be paying off, depending on the donations we can get, and I hope we get a lot, going to all the general hospitals in the state to pay off at least one person's bill, up to a hundred thousand, now I believe that's what it was. And then also, uh, we're going to give out the equipment to the patients directly, so not to the hospital, but the patients. So that's that on medical mission. If you wanna text in your donations, the code is on there. But again, I've put the link to the online donation thing online, and flyers will be coming out in due time. One second, let me check the chat. Okay, cool. All right, I don't know. Are there any questions about the medical mission? Uh, if not, next item is the twenty twenty four Scholarship Awards. Again, I went through a summary of this earlier on. I want to uh thank everyone who, and many of you are on this call, who had supported the hundred student challenge of last year. As an association, we gave out sixty two scholarships, but because of this challenge, we raised money for, I think, a hundred and fourteen more people, a hundred and whatever the math is, but we gave our scholarships to a hundred and seventy. whatever the math is, but we gave our scholarships to a hundred and seventy-five students in Akaiom State last year. And we're looking to make it even five hundred students this year. But as we're coming to New York, I know we're going to donate to their fundraiser. Come with this in mind, it was a very good initiative, it was very popular, the students liked it. I even met the recipients for those who did to make short videos and send to the people who sponsored them. And I know that for a few of them, they're still communicating even on Joe today. So again, that scholarship will take place ending of May. Association will give out sixty-two scholarships, two per local government area, a hundred thousand each, naira each, and then five hundred dollars to send students in the United States. And then hopefully with this student challenge, we can get even more donations. To that effect, the text donation keyword is on the page, but I've also put the link to the online donation page in the chat room, so please check that out. The date for scholarship will be somewhere between May twenty-first and twenty-fourth. But, you know, whatever date it is, I'll let you know, and it will be streamed live as always. Any questions about the scholarship? If not, who's coming in here? Akisan decides, this, well, there was an election two years ago, but because there were no contestants, we didn't really have any issues. So this year's convention will be like our first test case. And so I just wanted to remind everyone, especially those who are new to the Association, that unlike before where we had delegate votes, it's going to be one chapter, one vote, okay? And then after all the chapters have voted, by the time we go to the convention, everyone will pretty much know who the president will be. And then there will be a voice vote at the business meeting of the convention. And this, we're doing this to get rid of, or at least to mitigate all the alleged issues around corruption that used to take place in the past. So we believe that this way will be more transparent, will be more accountable to the people. Of course, we'll take lessons learned from this election and apply it to the future, but that's the way it is right now. And there will be a member of the electoral committee at each of these elections. I think that is why the committee wants to know when you have your elections. So you'll have to open up a Zoom portal, I don't know if maybe they're nearby to a particular chapter, they might be able to drive in, I don't know, but I'm just saying, get a Zoom link ready because they will have to be there. They don't have to be there for the entire meeting of your chapter, just for the election portion of it. And after each election, the chapter president will have to send out, what do you call it, an email or communication to all the council members with the results of those elections. That's where everybody knows those results going in as opposed to how it was in the past. And last but not least, I would ask everybody, I think between the Electoral Committee Chair, Mr. Hewitt, the Speaker, we're hounding the same point. Download and read the Constitution, it's on our website, if you can find it, you can reach out to me or the electoral chair or your chapter president, and they should be able to provide you a soft copy. But get familiar with nothing else, the election part of that Constitution. Because one thing that tends to get candidates and or chapters is failure to adhere to the deadlines and the processes. And then they make it seem as if the Association was trying to favor one person over the other. No. Failure to adhere to the rules, you know, then, you know, don't blame us for what's about to happen.
It's a press information, it's a press information, just correction. The, that second bullet supervising is not really, the second bullet should be observed. They have the right to observe, is at their discretion. But they are not supervising the election, the local chapters get to, they get to decide. Thank you. They get to decide how they're going to conduct the election. And the observer, the electoral committee has the right, they have the power to observe, but they are not going to conduct any local election, just want to make sure that's clear. And they also do, the electoral committee also have the power to say, listen, you do it this way, send us the evidence, and we'll take it. So that power is to observe, you know, not to conduct the local election.
I think that's what it says in the Constitution.
It will be, the, what do you call, the presentation will be updated before it's shared with the council.
Right, I don't want to threaten anybody that nationally is going over the top of the chapter, so.
No, 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 that's true.
Not at all. All right, thank you very much. Dr. Ekwon, you had your hand up?
Yeah, but yeah, Mr. President, I think what you said, like, absolutely, however, I will be introducing a bill in the council meeting, I just want you to know and everybody else, that a bill will be introduced to the council, number one. Let me, you know, when you talk about the dampening of people enthusiasm to go to the convention, when you know the president before you go to the convention, let me tell you the impact that will make, okay? Let's assume that Charlotte, North Carolina was contested. And then the president is already in on before we go to the, what is going to make all that, the chapter, what is going to entice them to go? One of the things during the election year, you can go back and check during the election year, what normally happened at the concession? A lot of people coming, there's a lot of interest. If we sit back, sit and ask that, and then let the president before the convention, I'm telling you, we're going to be diminishing the return. So I am going to be introducing a bill, that section, we have to, one of the things that I believe needs to be done, the electoral committee, however, they have to be integrity. If we have, if the report has to be made to them, they have to keep this a tight lift. Get, collect the number and keep it, because the man that were elected into that office, my good friend Akarabong, they are high caliber people of integrity. That integrity should be kept, if they know, I don't want to eh, 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 North Carolina, eh, get for dear, eh, then they begin, then it will dampen, reduce the enthusiasm of people to the convention, so I will be a bill on that.
Thank you very much, sir. Noted, we look forward to the debate on that at the council meeting, sorry, in New York. Mr. Moisong is asking that I post the link to chapters paying dues. I guess since that's more of a council issue, I'll put that in the council WhatsApp group, but yes, that will be done.
Yes, please, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move to the next topic, give me one second. So questions, I guess we've answered them all. I just wanted to reiterate what I call convention dynamics next. As I had mentioned earlier, I believe, you know, we're moving from where this Akisan used to be like a USA thing only, and especially if you want to look at the Charlotte and San Diego conventions, more and more people are coming from more and more countries, so we need to adapt accordingly. Also, as I had let the council know, shortly after I became president, I reached out to national presidents from other countries. So we have this organization called the Forum of Presidents of Akaiom Communities Worldwide. We meet every third Saturdays of the month. We started off with about five countries and we're now up to, I believe, seventeen. So I'm hoping to have hundred if we could, but the whole point is the strength in numbers. We're now part of a global community, we need to collaborate. For those of you in San Diego, you noticed that the president of the Scotland Akaiom Community was there. And we're hoping to have even more of them at this upcoming convention. Hopefully that will even encourage them to have their own conventions, their own projects, and we can, again, all collaborate. It'll be cheaper for us to combine to do things as opposed to, you know, everything being on Akisan USA's back. So again, we're going global, we need to adapt. Number two, in general, this is a two-way street. Like I said, we get lessons learned from members after every convention, but it goes both ways. So if you want one thing, you also have to be able to work to enable us to achieve that thing. So like we were talking about earlier, the minimum of two people per chapter to give minimum amount of money. We expect the chapter presidents to reach out to people as well. We don't want to go over the heads of chapter presidents to do this. So please, we are doing what you want, you have to play your part. Also, recommendations that were presented, okay, well, you already heard about that, rates are going up. We need to focus on sponsorships and donations. If we can get all this even before the convention, then we don't have to put that much pressure on ourselves to come up with this money on the convention Saturday. We also need to be flexible, like I mentioned, a committee was set up before the Miami Council Meeting, and they gave their reports in Miami. So we may not go to this, you know, one size fits all all the time. What works in Nashville may not necessarily work, I'm just saying, in New York, in Miami or wherever. So as members, we also have to be flexible and adapt to that fact. And I know we're not going to have another convention in this administration, but I'm saying moving forward, we need to look forward to that. And one other thing that was recommended was, convention hosts should put in their bids and be announced just like Olympics years in advance. So maybe if we know five years from now that a particular chapter will host, maybe that will help that chapter get cheaper rates as opposed to the way we're doing it now, where we wait till maybe September after the convention to start bidding slash, you know, signing contracts for future conventions. To put things in perspective with respect to sponsorships, my first convention was twenty twenty-one, it was COVID, I didn't have the idea, I wish I did. Having said that, there's no, I didn't, it would be adding it. So Charlotte twenty twenty-two, we came up with the idea of sponsorships before convention, and we raised fifteen thousand dollars in sponsorships. In San Diego, we came up with twenty-nine thousand, almost doubling that fifteen thousand. So for Nashville, I am asking that we all reach out to people to sponsor. If we go on the current trajectory, there is no reason why we cannot raise sixty thousand dollars again before the convention. For those who do not know, we have expenses to meet up with before the convention. We don't just spend, we don't just pay our bills after the convention, so the food that we eat, the booklet that we give out for free at the convention, they have to be paid for. We have to pay the hotel, in this case, a minimum F and B food and beverage of forty thousand dollars before taxes. So we have to pay these bills before the convention. That's why you see us sending out all this communication, you know, two, three times a week, because we have obligations that we need to satisfy. So again, if you know anyone, and we are reaching out to people, by the way, we have a fundraising committee where these things are being discussed, let us know, we don't have to be, it can be American corporations, international corporations, whatever, right? But again, it would even be a nice thing if we go to the convention, and I'm just saying, for example, the twenty twenty-four convention is sponsored by, I don't know, Delta Airlines, right? That way, when we go, we're just going there to have fun, knowing that not only have we raised our money, but also every aspect of the convention expense wise has been satisfied. So I just wanted to bring these numbers, I know I shared it at the last town hall, but not everyone was on there last time. Any questions or comments on everything I've just said so far?
Yeah, Mr. President, here, I think, so, I think it's good to communicate these costs, but I also think we need to have a vision of what we're trying to achieve with the cost structure that we have. You know, we just take bits and we just take nibbles, what we present to folks, people are not able to see the whole picture. So if I bring sixty thousand, what is that getting you? What are we trying to achieve with those money? I think we should communicate a whole vision of what we're trying to achieve with this convention when it comes to revenue and cost side. And then we can drill down to individual areas and try to see who can help. There just be some pieces, I'm not able to see from my standpoint, what you're achieving with that money. So maybe there's a different way that we can find a way to present that information. I think it will probably garner more attention or more maybe empathy, if that's the right word, but we need to figure out a better way to present that financial model to capture the people's attention, so they say, okay, here's which part I can help in, and this is what is going to help us achieve.
Thank you very much for those comments. For this year at least, and I think I sent this out maybe a few weeks or a month ago, there is that, I guess, I think, impact report that I sent out. And the intent is to, for everyone we approach for money, we show them what we've done. And that, I think, is like on the third page of that report, everything that has been done for the past four years is listed on there in summary. I also mentioned at the beginning, I know everyone doesn't have time to read on the website, but everything we have done, everyone that has been trained, they're all on the website as well. So yes, because a lot of people have come to me and said, oh, we want to donate money, but what are you actually doing with this money, right? So that's why I came up with this document, and this year is going to be attached to, that impact report in particular will be sent out so that before you give the money, you know what we've done in the past and what we intend to do for the future. I see, let me see someone in the chat room. Should also be a revenue target, not just cost. Okay, so the same thing you've mentioned here, thank you. All right. So final thoughts, like I said, you know, we need to adapt, this is twenty-first century, this is, okay. Prof. Itasari, you have your hand up?
Yes, so adding to what Mr. Hewitt said, when you say sixty thousand dollars, it doesn't even tell us the break-even point for the convention, that is, at what point will the Nashville Convention make profits? So it's not just enough to know what it will cost to who's the convention, but actually what will it cost, what revenue should be realized to even make profit from the convention? I think that's what is critical for people to know.
Okay, that makes sense, I will do the numbers and I'll share that with potential sponsors and donors as well. Thank you. Dr. Wamek Kwan, did you have your hand up? You put it down?
Oh, hello, Mr. President, I'm done, sorry, I, yeah.
Okay, cool.
I, yeah, any comment, I will, like I said, I will preserve it till the, till I see Dr. Kevin Ita in New York.
Making sure you go to New York.
Thank you very much. So final thoughts, you know, again, number one, we need to adapt to current trends.
I mean, I've also the convention, you know, to be, yeah.
That is correct, that is correct.
Oh, my goodness.
Akisan, Akisan family.
Yes. So, yes, I know, you know, this administration is pretty much over, but it's not about us, it's about now and the future, so even if we don't get things done now, I'm hoping the next set of presidents will take this thing even higher, so bring those ideas. We also, like I said, need to focus on external fundraising and sponsorships, and not just amongst us. To put things in perspective, last year, well, two years ago, twenty twenty-two, thanks to Dr. Wamek Kwan and Dr. Mamulik, we were able to get nine thousand dollars from State Farm, right? That's an American corporation. So if we can get more of those, I mean, last year in San Diego, we did the same thing, but I'm saying if we can do more of those, that'll be very good. Also, there's a book that I just finished reading, it's on nonprofits, forces for good, six practices of high-impact nonprofits, if you have time, read it. Highly encourage you to do so, and it came up with some interesting statistics here. You know, we're one of one point seven million nonprofits in the US. The nonprofit industry is a third largest employer, and yes, I know we're volunteers. One trillion dollars in annual revenue. That means there's a lot of money that people are willing to give, we just need to figure out how to tap into that. Eighty-four percent of millennials donate to charities. So that's the children who are born today, eighty-four percent of them donate to charities. Corporations gave almost twenty-five billion dollars in twenty twenty. Maybe the number has gone up or down based on inflation and maybe COVID, but that's billion with a B. Again, we need to figure out how to tap into this revenue source so that we do not keep, as someone had said, tax ourselves to death. And we started the online giving, I believe in twenty twenty-one. Twenty-two percent of people gave online, and twenty-eight percent of that gave through their mobile devices. That's why we came up with the idea of QR codes for one. And then last but not least, and of course, I think we did Zelle, this year we're going to introduce Cash App too. We need to go online and mobile because that's where most of the people live now. And then last but not least, the top ten generous states, I thought this was interesting, from first to last, Utah, Mississippi, Alabama, Tennessee, Georgia, South Carolina, Idaho, Oklahoma, Arkansas, and North Carolina. And guess what? By the time we would have been done with this convention, three of those ten states are on this list, Georgia, North Carolina, and Tennessee. Maybe we need to look at taking our conventions to these states to tap into the those states being able to give money, so I just thought that was interesting to share with everybody. All right, so, I don't know if there are any other questions, but if not, I want to thank everybody for joining this call today. And it did say it was going to last two hours, we've gone over by thirty minutes, but again, the information that was shared was very important, very critical, especially as it relates to upcoming convention and elections. Most, I'm assuming all of you have our phone number, if you don't, get it from your chapter president, we have our social media handles on here. Thank you, everyone, for joining, thank you for the support you've given this administration. Thanks for your love and sacrifice for Akisan. I look forward to seeing all of you in New York for the second National Council Meeting there. But have a great day and remain blessed. Thank you very much.
I'll see you, bye, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you, National President.
All right, bye-bye, guys.